... taking place, and this will be our 10-second warning before we get started.
I am Mayor John Lewis, and to my right and left are members of the Gilbert Town Council,
Fifteen seconds.
Fifteen seconds?
and it's good to have you here.
Okay. Twenty.
I officially call the meeting to order.
No attention to our town manager, as he is trying to do a final moment of preparation.
Councilmember Bridgette Peterson will introduce our special citizen who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Those who are here at council chambers, I invite you to please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Casey here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
To the American flag, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Casey. Thank you, Mayor.
As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. Tonight's invocation will be offered by Hector Oriana, who is one of our leaders at the nearby Desert Gateway Baptist Church. Hector, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you so much for this opportunity to come this evening, Lord, to our meeting. Lord, I just thank you so much for the council members. I thank you for their efforts. I thank you for just their hard work behind the scenes. Lord, I just pray that you just continue to be with our country, Lord. Be with our government, Lord. Be with our people that serve, Lord, our armed forces, Lord. I pray that you just continue to be with them, guard them, protect them. Lord, I just thank you so much for those that serve us, Lord, our first responders. Lord, I pray that you just be with them as well, protect them, keep their families safe. Lord, we just thank you again for all that you've done for us. Lord, we just thank you for this country. Lord, we love you and we thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Our deputy clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor John Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Aquarum is present.
Thank you. We'll continue with the agenda item number one. Vice Mayor Ray.
This month's highlighted pillar is citizenship. As council members and town staff, we are committed to helping the community be a better place to live and work by sharing resources to serve others, following all laws and regulations, and protecting the environment.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor will now present our first proclamation of the night.
Mayor, thank you very much for letting me present this topic, and I'm going to introduce this topic as we prepare for Father's Day. It's on men's health, and I want to invite Keith Lavender down. Is Mr. Lavender here? Keith, come on down, and while he's doing that, we have a special introduction to this particular topic. Gardenia, can you kick this off?
(singing) No one's been like Gaston, I'll get big like Gaston. No one's got us well clapped in his chin like Gaston. As a specimen, yes, I'm intimidating.
What do you think? There's to men's health, right? There's a friend of mine, a close friend of mine, that's alive today because one night his daughter woke him up with a phone call and said, "I just had this feeling that you need to go see the doctor." And he was a man, like a lot of us, that don't like to go see the doctor. He went to the doctor because his daughter insisted. She called all the way from Washington, D.C., and said, "You need to go see the doctor. I just have this feeling. Just do it for me if nothing else." He went to the doctor, and the next day he had a quadruple bypass. And that's not an unusual story. Each of you know those stories, and you men, I'm looking at you, okay? We need to take care of ourselves for our good families and our loved ones, and so for Father's Day, we're celebrating men's health. Keith Lavender is here. What would you like to add, Keith?
I would just like to add that I think it's important that we focus on educating and lifestyle resources to really prevent problems before they become, you know, problems that need a quadruple bypass in the morning. You know, so if we can really focus as a community on healthy lifestyle habits being adopted when we're early on, we'll be able to have men and women living longer, better lives benefiting our community.
Thank you, Keith. I appreciate it. Mayor, would you mind joining us here for a picture?
Well, one more thing. We love our small businesses in Gilbert, and wellness happens to be in the name of your business right here in Gilbert. What is your business?
Forsyte Chiropractic Wellness Center.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to invite Domingo Santos Jr. and his, those who have come with him to support this proclamation. Come on up. Now, I'm going to let them get up here, but Domingo's actually got a very special honor recently, and we're very proud of that and happy that he's here, and wow, we have a big group. This is great. I'm feeling a little outnumbered here. All right. Well, we're just honored that Mr. Santos came here tonight. He's actually been appointed to the honorary, to the post of Honorary Consul of Portugal here in the state of Arizona. And so, before I read the proclamation, I wanted to give him a chance, and anyone else who wanted to say a few words, you're welcome to do that, just talk to us a little bit more about this proclamation and, you know, what you came here tonight to share with us.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Councilmember Peterson and members of council. Well, we're very excited to be here today to celebrate Portugal Day, which happens on June 10. That's a celebration that occurs around the world with Portuguese communities in the United States, in Canada, of course, in Portugal, and in the far reaches of our globe. Joined here today with members of the Portuguese community in Arizona, and they include members of, former members of the Portuguese Armed Forces, and even Marie Ferrer here, a former member of the Town Council of Wickenburg. And so you can see that as a Portuguese community, we take great pride in the state of Arizona, and great pride in being involved, being part of our economy, and being part of our culture. So I thank you, Councilmember Peterson, Mayor Lewis, and members of the council for joining us in this recognition, and we look forward to growing the consulate here in the state of Arizona and providing economic development to the town of Gilbert and the state of Arizona.
Thank you so much. It's one of the things I love so much about our community is all the different cultures that enrich us, and so thank you so much. Such a valuable part of our community. We're glad that you're here. I'm going to just share a few lines of this, and then we'll get some pictures, and then we'll move on. But here's some of the words from the proclamation, say, "Whereas on March 3, Portugal, in recognition of the cultural, economic, and educational relationship between Portugal and the state of Arizona, appointed Domingos Santos Jr., a resident of Gilbert, to the post of Honorary Consul of Portugal in the state of Arizona to serve Portuguese nationals and descendants in the state of Arizona and further grow the relationship between the nation and the state. Whereas the Gilbert Town Council supports and promotes cultural activity in the town of Gilbert to benefit the quality of life of residents and the local economy, now therefore be it resolved that Mayor John Lewis, on behalf of the Gilbert Town Council, does hereby proclaim June 10, 2015, as Portugal Day in the town of Gilbert." And I guess we'll try and get some pictures. We've got a big group here, so.
Domingos, it is an honor to have you here in Gilbert and have this distinguished recognition. Let's see if I can remember the word. Obrigada, 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 obrigada. Thank you, all right.
For those that have served with our military as an active duty or in the reserves, or those that have retired and are veterans, could I have you come to the front and stand next to me? For anyone of those that have served in our armed forces, could I have you come? And that includes our current town employees. If you come down in front, we have a very special proclamation because you will be, in a sense, representing the many here in the town of Gilbert. And then for fun, if you can introduce yourself and what branch of the service that you may have served, and maybe the years, maybe not the years, what you can do there. How many years? Maybe how many years?
I'm Amber Costa with the Office of Management and Budget, and I served in the United States Navy for seven years.
Tim Doran, Police Chief, Army, and Army National Guard, 36 years.
Antonio rolled in. I served with the Air Force for 10 years and Army Reserve for three years.
Gary Scott, and I served in the Army for two years.
Dennis Polczak, Army, two years, '72, '74.
Well, we thank you. We have a proclamation that basically is celebrating the United States Army on its 240th birthday. How about that? And that birthday is on June 14. Amazing. So let me read this short proclamation, and all of you, even though it's for the Army, we look at this as a team, and all of us are on one team, but thank you. Whereas the United States Army is celebrating its 240th birthday on June 14, 2015, on this day, the United States Army will recognize with great pride that thousands of young Americans who have answered and will continue to answer the call of service. Those young men and women have shown sense of duty, selfless service, and respect through the act of great honor, integrity, and personal courage. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor John Lewis of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim on June 14, 2015, as the United States Army's 240th birthday, and declare June 14 through June 20 as United States Army Week in Gilbert, Arizona, and encourage all citizens to join in this salute as we express our gratitude for those who have served and those who are now serving to protect our nation and its freedoms. How about a round of applause for our citizens? And this is a picture moment. It is nine, Jordan. It is nine.
Would Dr. Denise Birdwell please come forward? And while she's coming forward, Dr. Denise Birdwell is one of my heroes, and let me tell you why. Since 2009, when I was elected to the Town Council first, I was made the liaison to the Higley School District, which was absolutely perfect because my kids were starting kindergarten. That's Higley traditional, well, it's Higley traditional now, but it was Higley Elementary at the time. So I got to rub elbows with Dr. Birdwell from the very beginning of my children's educational career, and what I have learned, I could not put in a very large book. She has done a tremendous amount, and we are very sad that she has chosen to retire from being our Higley District Superintendent. She promoted and instilled a community that doesn't just use a slogan, but actually lives the slogan, that is connect, engage, inspire. And at every turn, Dr. Birdwell has made it about the kids, and isn't that what education is for? And so, very grateful, nice round of applause for what she's done for us. I get to present the certificate, and then I'm going to pass the mic to Dr. Birdwell and let you hear some of her words of wisdom. But on behalf of the Gilbert Town Council, we extend a very special recognition for your outstanding achievement and excellence as Higley Unified School District Superintendent. During your seven years of leadership over the growing A-rated district, you have faced a multitude of challenges, but still managed to build two new middle schools and added Mandarin immersion, biotechnology, and engineering classes to the curriculum, all with declining budgets. The opportunities for growth of the student, staff, and community are unmatched thanks to your commitment to education. Through your collaborative efforts, students from Gilbert and Queen Creek have a positive outlook because they were the center of your decisions, and we thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you very much. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the Gilbert community in the last seven years. I work with the very best teachers, wonderful administrators, but what really makes it work are our children. We have great kids and great families in the Gilbert community, and that has really made that magic come together. It is always my vision that every decision that we make must first and foremost start with, is it student-focused? And if it is, then we'll make the right decision. And I will take that into retirement because I'm just starting a new journey, and I will be an educational consultant, helping the entire state. I will be training administrators on how to better train teachers to make students engage, help them engage in learning. So that's my next journey, and I'll still be around a little bit, and I serve on the Higley Educational Foundation for the next two years. So thank you very much, Gilbert, and a special thank you to the mayor. We started our process together. I've learned from your leadership, and I certainly have enjoyed our friendship along the way. So to the town of Gilbert, thank you so much.
I'll just add a quick comment. We had some of our local heroes come up and stand a few minutes ago, those who have served in the military. And in addition to that, and this street right in front is called American Hero's Way for those who have served, our local public safety officials too, but Gilbert is a community with premier education, and this is the 30th anniversary of the Lewis family in Gilbert, and we picked Gilbert because of education. And Dr. Birdwell has taken it up a couple of notches, and we appreciate her, and as Councilmember Daniel said, you're one of my heroes too, so thank you so much. Congratulations on all your hard work. Town Manager Banjo, there's a public service announcement that's about to be shown. Tell us about it.
Mayor, I'm going to let Gardenia La Madrid from our digital government office go ahead and introduce this.
Thank you, Patrick. Mayor Lewis, council members, and residents, thank you for being here tonight. As Patrick mentioned, I'm a digital journalist here in the Communication Department for Gilbert, Arizona. We have something that we'd like to share, that's, excuse me, we're very excited about, and that is our latest video for our Safe Driving campaign. In 2013, 33% of Gilbert's traffic accidents were due to distracted driving. That's a 13% increase from 2012. In this year alone, we've seen 10 traffic-related fatalities in Gilbert. While these numbers are disturbing, we are still the second safest city in the country, and we want to keep it that way. You can help us by sharing our Speed Down, Eyes Up, Drive Safely campaign with your contacts, pledge to drive safely on social media, and use our hashtag #drivesafely. You can also share this public service announcement that I will be sharing with you in just one moment on your social media platforms, and you can find the video series on our YouTube channel. And lastly, if you're not already following us on social media, on that back table, we have cards listing all of our social media handles. Please pick up one and follow us. We would greatly appreciate it. And let me find this for you.
Who wants to get in an accident? Many people die texting while driving. People have lost their lives not knowing how dangerous texting while driving can be. Texting causes a big crash risk. This is why you should never text while driving.
We are the second safest city in the nation. Let's keep it that way. Speed down, eyes up, drive safely.
A little background for you. The little girl that appears in this video, her name is Katie. She's an eight-year-old Gilbert resident, and she attends Edgewood Chartered School. She actually wrote that letter and sent it to Gilbert Police, and as a result, we produced this video. Katie and her father are actually here tonight, sitting on the front row. If you would all join me in thanking her for her participation on this campaign. Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Mayor Lewis, council members, and Patrick for your time and attention.
Gardenia, thank you. Next on the agenda, communication from citizens. Vice Mayor Ray, do we have some requests tonight?
Mayor, we have two requests, but I believe one of them is actually for one of the agenda items. Do you mind if I ask?
Please.
Mark, is yours for item number 29?
Yes.
Okay. So we just have one communication from citizen, and we'll have Mark speak when Agenda Item 29 comes up.
Thank you. Please proceed.
We'll invite Paul Getty to come forward and speak. Paul, you'll have three minutes, and if you'll introduce yourself and let us know whether or not you're a Gilbert resident when you begin, please.
Yes, thank you. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, my name is Paul M. Getty. I'm a full-time resident of the state of Arizona. I reside in Fountain Hills. The subject that I'm here about is the Salt River Project, SRP Electric Utility District Boundaries. I'm here to point out an injustice that exists to the town of Gilbert. A large number of Gilbert residents have SRP as their electric utility provider. However, most of the land area in the town of Gilbert lies outside of the SRP district boundaries for their electric utilities. Those landowners are not represented on the SRP Board of Directors, and those landowners that are outside of the district do not have any voting rights for the Board of Directors. The SRP Board of Directors for the electric utility, the Power District, is a political subdivision of the state of Arizona, and in theory, it is a community utility. However, in reality, it acts as a monopoly. Major areas of Gilbert are subject to the SRP Power District Board's decisions and their control without any representation and without voting rights. This violation of the American values can be corrected through legislative action. SRP is not subject to the Arizona Corporation Commission. I am here to request your help in convincing your state senators and your state representatives to sponsor legislation in 2016, in the upcoming session of 2016, to expand the SRP Power District Boundaries such that all of Gilbert is within the SRP Power District boundaries and such that...
Please proceed.
We'll invite Paul Geddy to come forward and speak. Paul, you'll have three minutes and if you'll introduce yourself and let us know whether or not you're a Gilbert resident when you begin, please.
Yes, thank you. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, my name is Paul M. Geddy. I'm a full-time resident of the state of Arizona. I reside in Fountain Hills. The subject that I'm here about is the Salt River Project, SRP, Electric Utility District Boundaries. I'm here to point out an injustice that exists to the town of Gilbert. A large number of Gilbert residents have SRP as their electric utility provider. However, most of the land area in the town of Gilbert lies outside of the SRP district boundaries for their electric utilities. Those landowners are not represented on the SRP Board of Directors. And those landowners that are outside of the district do not have any voting rights for the Board of Directors. The SRP Board of Directors for the Electric Utility, the Power District, is a political subdivision of the state of Arizona and in theory, it is a community utility. However, in reality, it acts as a monopoly. Major areas of Gilbert are subject to the SRP Power District Board's decisions and their control without any representation and without voting rights. This violation of the American values can be corrected through legislative action. SRP is not subject to the Arizona Corporation Commission. I am here to request your help in convincing your state senators and your state representatives to sponsor legislation in 2016, in the upcoming session of 2016, to expand the SRP Power District Boundaries such that all of Gilbert is within the SRP Power District Boundaries and such that landowners will have a right to vote, all landowners will have a right to vote in the SRP Board of Director elections. I will email you a copy of this letter, and I believe you may have black and white copies. I will email you a copy of this letter tonight or tomorrow. It provides links and more explanation, more detail. It's just a note, a similar injustice and lack of representation and lack of voting rights also currently exists in all of Queen Creek, all of Fountain Hills, and the Owatuki area of Phoenix. And tonight I learned that it also, that injustice also exists in south part of Chandler. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Paul. As the agenda states, the council is limited to make any comments on communication from citizens, but Paul, I did want to just note that we do have a copy of what you have presented and we will make sure we follow up with town leadership. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, under the consent calendar, sometimes we do have citizens that wish to speak. Is that the case tonight?
Mayor, we have two residents who wish to speak. One for item 16A, which we're going to pull, and one for item 24. And the lady who'd like to speak on item 24 is only if necessary. She has marked that she is in favor of the item and that has not been asked to be pulled, so I believe it'll be voted in favor of.
Thank you. And then, so 16A at this point, just to give me guidance, and maybe even from a legal standpoint, if 16A has been pulled, do we still, if someone has requested, make that available?
Mayor, when I mean pulled, I mean to be spoken about, not pulled off the agenda.
Got it, okay. All right, so to the council, as our agenda states, the items under the consent calendar may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. And it is really up to the council whether or not we have public comments on consent items, and so I'll just look to my left and right and assume that it would be fine. So, let's pull 16A and before we do that, and I think what you're saying is that council members have some other items they wish to have pulled, and so please update that list.
That's correct. So Mayor, the items that are wished to be discussed in further detail are Items 8, 9, 12, and 16A. With that, I'm ready to make a motion, Mayor.
Please.
Mayor, I move that we approve Items 6, 7, 10A through D, 11, 13, 14A and B, 15A and B, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24A through D, 25, and Item 26.
Thank you. With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, with that motion and second, please vote. Those items are approved with a seven of all. Thank you. The first item that will come back to is Agenda Item Number 8. Who wished to speak on that?
Mayor, for Item Number 8, that was Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Mayor, I didn't have any comment. I just wanted to pull it so we could vote separately.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on Agenda Item Number 8?
Mayor, oh, sorry. I move that we approve the Agenda Item.
Thank you.
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. Let's approve with a five to vote. Thank you.
Mayor, may I interrupt?
Please.
Item Number 25, I just received a note from town staff that the applicant for Item Number 25 is here in the audience, and if they'll just come up to the town clerk at the staff table at the front, you can pick up what you need as part of that item.
Do I have it right here? So I need to sign it, okay. We'll multitask. Continue. So Agenda Item Number 9?
That was by Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, please.
Mayor, thank you. This has to do with the agreement with Cox Communications. And for the reference for the council here, I'm going to be referring to Item Number 2. It's page 56 in the packet, seven of 10 of this document. It's kind of a small item here, but it's really a point of clarification here. I was just reading through this. There's a great program being extended by Cox to our community, and it's probably a question here for Cox representatives here that they might be able to clarify here. There's wording here about a program that's extended to students that are in eligible free school lunch programs, and then it talks about school districts and it names a couple of the districts. There's other public schools in Gilbert that are outside district boundaries. Public charter schools are those. And I just wanted to see if Cox would just say, if they could extend that offer to those public charter schools that are eligible. This is just for the benefit of those that are not totally clued into all the education law. Title 1 is typically what this program is, and so I don't know if there's someone here that would just want to just clarify that, and then I'd be happy to, you know, move forward, Mayor.
We do have someone special here, so please.
Mayor and Councilmember Taylor, I'm Susan Anvil with Cox Communications, and the provision that you're speaking of, I'm happy to address. The program Connect to Compete is available to all families who have a student enrolled in school who's eligible for the free school lunch program. Cox has no concerns at all about extending that program and the availability of that offer that's detailed in the agreement in front of you to any families that are free school lunch eligible, whether they're in a charter school or a district school in Gilbert. So we're very comfortable with that.
Thank you. Any additional questions on that? Councilmember Taylor?
No, I appreciate it. Thank you for the feedback, so. And then just one thing, I'm happy to move this one, just as a point of clarification. My school is not in Gilbert. It is not eligible for this and will not be applying. In case anybody has that question, I do operate a public charter school, but this is for the benefit of those that would be eligible, so I wanted to just clear that. But Mayor, with that, and your permission, I'd move to approve this as stated in the agenda and clarified here by Cox representative tonight.
Second.
With that motion, second, and to our town attorney, any additional comments before we officially vote?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor. And so the only change would be to amend Exhibit A, Section 2, First Bullet Point, to include and public charter schools, as well as the amendment to the Fourth Bullet Point to also add the phrase "and public charter schools." Is that correct, sir?
So moved. Thank you. So with that motion, and the second, and the clarification, please vote. Let's approve with a seven of all. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, the next one is...
Item Number 12, Mayor.
Number 12.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Mayor, I guess we didn't need to pull it. I thought there might be some discussion on this. I'm totally in favor of offering a hearing if that's the request of the community. So if there are no comments or concerns, I'm happy to just move into...
Please.
Mayor, I move to approve Item 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Let's approve with a seven of all. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, please.
The final item, Mayor's 16A, and that's Councilmember Victor Peterson as well, keeping in mind that there was a request to speak on this.
Please, let's proceed with that first.
We invite Ginny Hildebrand to come forward, please. As a reminder, you have three minutes, and if you would please state your name and whether or not you're a Gilbert resident.
Yes, Mayor Lewis and Vice Mayor and members of the council. I don't believe I was intending to speak at this section of the agenda, but if you want me to go on here, I'd be happy to do that.
Probably to clarify, 16A is what Vice Mayor Ray has seen as the item. Do you remember which item you wish to speak on?
I was wanting to thank the council for funding nonprofits.
Okay. You're on the right one. We'll take it right now, please.
I am with United Food Bank. I am not a resident of the town of Gilbert, but as the president and CEO of this organization, United Food Bank, I wanted to tell you how appreciative we are, not only of the funding that has been made available to us this year, but in the past. And also, thank you for supporting the wonderful Gilbert Feeding Families Food Drive, which is going to be wrapping up this next Monday. And we appreciate all of your support because we know that a family isn't stable without food on the table. And we heard your study committee presentations this last Tuesday. We know you're concerned about a lot of families in your community that are suffering from domestic violence or other kinds of social ills. We want to make sure that they know, that you know, that food is an essential component of making sure that families are stable and doing well. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Now, I don't know if this is an appropriate time, but why don't we just get some help on Monday? We have a big event coming, and to our town manager, are you able to give us a detail on that because it ties right in with this? I think it's Monday at 7:30, and you can get some help from our deputy clerk if that needs to happen.
At a very high level, I can tell you we are having our weigh-in for our annual food drive for United Food Bank. If you would like additional information, I will enlist the capable support of our deputy town clerk.
And I believe that's Monday at 7:30, right here at our town hall? And I don't know what the figure is yet. I'm right on the edge of my seat, ready to find out myself.
I'm sworn to secrecy.
Okay.
Mayor, since you brought it up, I thought maybe this is an appropriate time to discuss the council challenge that took place via Facebook. And just reminding council members, if they wish to donate and if they want to commit to the promises that they made via Facebook, that between now and Monday morning is the best time to turn those dollars in, so thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. So that gives us a chance to just lift it up even more, because this is a great council and integrity is one of our values, so we'll proceed. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Ray, just to confirm, any other consent calendar items that we needed to discuss?
16A we still need to discuss.
Okay, oh, that's right. Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I didn't have a comment. I just was pulling so we could vote separately, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion on 16A before I entertain a motion?
Mayor, just one comment, and that is, I very much appreciate the leadership that you've brought forward on this agenda item and the collaboration that's taken place amongst staff. This is always a difficult topic for us every year, and I feel like this is actually the most smoothly it's ever gone, and I think that a lot of that has to do with your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you. Team effort and appreciate all. And we've got some more work to do, based on our discussion in the study session. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to approve Item 16A.
Aye, second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Let's approve with a five to vote. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, I think we move to the public hearing.
I agree, Mayor.
For planning in the next few minutes, do we have some requests from citizens to speak?
We do, Mayor. Item 28, Item 29, and Item 30, if it's not moved.
Okay. Thank you. And from the council, did we have some requests?
On public hearing?
Yes.
34, is that on public hearing? Yes. And, let's see, obviously 40, some obvious ones, but 40 and 41 and 42.
Thank you. Any other items that council members wish to make sure that we had some discussion? As stated on the agenda, the, in order to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard, excuse me. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the council. After the public hearing, the council may act on all items, not requiring additional staff, public, or council member comment with a single vote. So based on what I've just heard, 27, 31, 32, 33, 35, 36, 37, 38, and 39, I would be in a position to open the public hearing on those items and then close the public hearing. So, Councilmember Taylor, did I miss one?
Pull 36.
Pull 36, yes. So let me repeat that. I'll do it with an official. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Items 27, 31, 32, 33, 35, 37, 38, and 39, and I close the public hearing on those same items. And we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the council approves Agenda Items 27, 31, 32, 33, 35, 37, 38, and 39.
With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Let's approve with a seven of all. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, am I not allowed to say anything about 39 as being a rest of the term or something that I needed to do ahead of time?
Let's see, did we have a card on 39?
Mayor, we did not have any cards.
Okay. Why don't maybe our deputy clerk, Mark? It sounds like we've got two citizens. If you could just meet with them back in the corner real fast. Oh, okay. If you could come talk to our deputy clerk.
We can reopen the public hearing.
And, Mark, I think from a council perspective, we can easily reopen the public hearing on that item. Let's proceed while that discussion takes place to Agenda Item 28. We had a, let me now open the public hearing on Agenda Item 28, and we had a citizen who wished to speak on that item.
Yeah, we invite Darrell Chester to come forward and speak on that item. Darrell, like you've seen before, three minutes, please, and if you'll state your name and whether you're a Gilbert resident, we appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Darrell Chester. I'm the owner of Jester's Billiards. I am not a resident of Gilbert, although if you ask my family, I spend most of my time at my small business that is located in Gilbert. So if the majority of my lifetime is spent in Gilbert, we'll see. About five years ago, I approached the city council here and asked for your approval in being able to sell beer and wine at my establishment at Gilbert Road and Baseline. At that time, you guys allowed me to. I had taken over a business that was in bankruptcy, an IRS receivership, had an employee staff of about five. Over the last five years, we've improved the business. It's taken off. I've been able to increase my labor to a staff of 12. We've tried to do several community-minded things, raising money for different charities. We've been able, over the last five years, to donate over $18,000 to different charities and events in the area, trying to raise money for people that are in hardship. I'm coming to you today to ask you to allow me to start selling distilled spirits, to change my liquor license from a number seven to a number six. I don't take this lightly. I realize it is a big jump. I've been in the food and beverage and hospitality industry in Arizona for over 25 years. I've operated over seven different pool halls in the state of Arizona, all of them operated under a number six, except for Jester's Billiards. I'm currently the vice president of the Arizona Licenseed Beverage Association, which is also the, handles the Arizona Business Council for Alcohol Education. I train my staff personally, six hours before I allow them to even serve anyone on my floor, and every one of my staff members is required to go through a training class approved by the state. That is actually not a requirement by the state. The state only asks that managers and owners go through the training process. I put my entire staff... I put my entire staff of bartenders and servers through that. So, at this time, I just ask for your consideration and approval to allow me to start selling mixed spirits and cocktails at Jester's Billiards.
Thank you. Any additional council discussion on agenda item 28? I will close the public hearing on agenda item 28 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item 28.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. With that motion, second please vote. That's approved with a seven to vote. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, before we move back to that, there's probably one more I now see that I probably should have made this comment, just in case our Cox team members. It looks like we were done with all the items, unless I missed one. Representing the council, we did want to thank you for your diligence efforts. And the partnership is strong and continues, so thank you very much. And you are invited to stay for as long as you'd like, but just in case you did move on at some point.
34 will address Cox.
So, we do have one more, I'm hearing. All right. I was premature, but maybe we'll have some additional comments after 34. Vice Mayor Ray, back to the discussion that just took place on possibly reconsidering opening an item, please.
So, Mayor, I move that we reconsider item number 39. And once that's voted upon, if it's approved, then we can open the public hearing and hear that discussion.
Second.
Okay. Those in favor of reconsidering item 39, please vote. That's approved with a seven to vote. So, I open the public hearing on agenda item 39. And Vice Mayor Ray, we have a citizen that wished to speak on that item.
We do. I believe Daylin, Darren.
Yeah.
Daylin, I apologize. So, you have three minutes, like the previous people, and if you would please state your name and whether you're a Gilbert resident.
Yes, my name is Dale Ann Darren, and I am a Gilbert resident. I've been a Gilbert resident since 1999. I purchased my home in 98, so you can see that I have been here for a while and have certainly watched the town grow. I'm not one of the best public speakers, and I wasn't actually planning on speaking with this. I own two properties in Gilbert. This is one of them, which is at my Blue Marlin address in Parkway Village. And I just got this notice in the mail that said about a maintenance improvement. It didn't go into detail, really. And of course, I work an awful lot. I'm also in the real estate market, so it does a lot of hours. And I also do new home developments and things like that. But anyways, I don't know if this is just a tax levy, because of course, on here, it didn't say, the notice that I got, that it was only for one year. However, I see on item 39 that it says that you are proposing from July 1st to June 15, or July 1st, 2015, to June 30th of next year. Is that just saying that you're not doing really just a monthly assessment to add into the taxes there, maybe to take care of the streets, the lights, the one park that's there? Or is this something that they're going to create maybe more of an HOA where there's a monthly thing that's going on, you know, and every year it gets voted on or something? Can you just tell me a little bit more about that? Or is that something I just need to take more time out of my busy schedule to figure out? Sorry.
Mayor, this is, we'll be happy to address your questions. I think Melanie can handle some of those. Maybe if she has all of her questions listed out, and then we can, unless you want to go back and forth, it's up to you.
We've, we've never had this special assessment in this particular property, so to just automatically have an increase of $59 a month, or 58 whatever a month, and it does say approximate, so that's not even a set rate, you know, I just don't know why more people aren't here, basically, to talk about it.
I'm here.
Oh, well, thank you.
Councilmember Daniels, can you say that again?
I think it'd be great if Melanie could give, none of these are new Parkway Improvement districts, but Melanie, if you wanted to, I think she has lots of answers for us.
Mayor, councilmembers, Melanie Dykstra, management support analyst. The Parkway Improvement Districts, as you know, we have 11 in the town of Gilbert. And the way that they do work is that the town is basically the maintenance oversight of the operation of all of the base maintenance that does go on in there. And through the legislation, part of the process is that we identify what it takes to manage those common areas. And then the property owners are assessed through their annual property taxes. We do a variety of different notifications to them. Throughout this year, we've actually done numerous more notifications to the residents, including an annual meeting that we had in October that discussed if there were needed maintenance items that they were looking for, improvements that they were interested in. We actually did a voting process this year in many of the communities that were looking to respond. We communicate by email for those that we have on file. We do send the notices. They did get a last letter this year in regards to the fact that this meeting, because we had originally identified that the public hearing would be in May, and then when it was moved to June by state law, we were required to give additional notice. That is the letter that they received. But this is not new. This is their annual assessment that is collected yearly and through the property taxes that are done by the county.
So, Mayor, maybe just to clarify, any common areas located within these neighborhoods are actually maintained through this Parkway Improvement District? And so, probably specific to your individual ones, that would have to be probably done offline, but those specifics can certainly be given. And then maybe some more information on that process, so that both of you can participate in future years.
And Melanie, on the comment about this was a surprise. I believe there were assessments in prior years, and maybe that was just not known. Would that be a fair statement?
Mayor, councilmembers, yes, there have been assessments ever since the PK80s were created, so it has been happening since the 80s.
Okay. And it may be if we do proceed, that the two of you could at least get contact information, so you could get the specific questions answered later. Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just want to say that, based on what I've learned about this process, we really try very hard to engage all the property owners. In fact, the law does not require us to take a vote on what improvements will be done and what the resulting costs and levies will be. But we do that, and we always honor the majority vote of the property owners. Now, if somehow our communications are not what they should be, and we've dropped the ball here or there, we need to certainly look at that. And so, I would encourage you to reach out to this property owner and anyone else. But I know that that's our intent, and so I think it's a pretty good process. There may be some opportunities for improvement, but overall, I think once property owners get familiar with it, they understand that it's really driven by the property owners, rather than the council.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council on agenda item 29? I close the public hearing on agenda item 29.
39.
39, of course, 39, but.
39 is fine, you can do that.
Okay. Thank you. My quality advisors, though, I close the public hearing on agenda item 39, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item 39.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second please vote. That's approved with a seven to vote. Thank you. And thank you for coming to share that. Now, my eyes are on 29. And so, I open the public hearing on agenda item 29. Vice Mayor Ray, there were several that wished to speak, is that correct?
Mayor, we have three people who wish to speak. Two are against it, and one did not list, therefore, against it.
Okay.
We would invite.
And let me do this before the three, just to turn to the council. On Tuesday at our study session, we did have a chance to have an overview, but I, Amy, you're here, so why don't for those who are here in council chambers, and also citizens watching, and if you could just give a brief summary as to what agenda item 29 is?
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, and members of Town Council, Amy Temm's Planning Department. We are here to discuss the appeal of district lofts, item number 29. Just to give you a little bit of brief location and history on the project, the site is located within the Heritage Village area. It is located with the star, as you see on the screen. It is general plan, residential greater than 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre, and zone multifamily medium. You can see here on the aerial photo, it is adjacent to the railroad tracks and is tucked up against general industrial to the west, multifamily, again, to the south, SF6 to the south also. And then the railroad owns the little piece of property that's at the little acute corner of the triangle right there at Cullumber and Ash. As we zoom in a little closer, you get a better view of the area, and that Oak Street and Cullumber is a intersection without a stop sign, and it is free flow of traffic at that location. Lot of little bungalow homes in the area. And then we have the age-restricted community of Page Commons there directly to the south. Their main entrance is the far north entrance, their south entrance is chained off, and they do not use that. There was, well, just to show you the project that was approved, it is a multifamily project. It meets code and zoning. And we did also use the Heritage Design Guidelines to review the project for landscape and such. It is 170 units. It's a gated community. There are two gates, and I will point to them, because sometimes people have a little bit a hard time finding them. And all of a sudden, my, it worked earlier, so I'm just going to wing it. The gates are internal a little bit, just to either side of the clubhouse. They are not out by the main street at Cullumber. And there is one main entry on the right side of the project. You see it as the double entry with a median in the middle. And then there's an exit drive only that is on the left side, going back out to Cullumber. There are no other options. It was brought up by some of the community that the old Phoenix right-of-way along the railroad track should be used for access. It is an old alignment. It is no longer a road. It is not paved, and it is in the general plan as part of the trail system. So, that was not an option. Here we have the actual approved project inlaid into the aerial photo. And the appeal that was filed after the approval was a 3-1 vote by the Redevelopment Commission on April 15th of this year. The appeal was for the perpetual negative impact of the district loft's main entry on Lot 3 of Lacy Track. And there was a stipulation that was added to the approval at Redevelopment Commission that the applicant would work with the owner of Lot 3 to mitigate headlights and traffic. It was, the appeal stated that they did not feel that just stating mitigation measures were enough, and that they would like the actual design and for the owner to be comfortable with what the mitigation was. So, the applicant reached out to not only Lot 3, but Lots 1 through 4, that all would, are directly across the street from this project. Though the exit drive that was most in question is the main exit drive that would face Lot 3. The exit drive that comes out at the corner does not face any homes. However, it could be discussed that the turning motion of the vehicles and the lights in the turning motion could impact any of the four lots. So, the applicant did reach out to all four homeowners, or property owners, I should say. And at this point in time, as of today, we have received, Lot 1 has declined verbally. Lot 2 has accepted mitigation with a letter. Lot 3 has accepted mitigation with an email, and Lot 4 has declined mitigation. I believe we have that in writing also. They were, is in your packet, the designs that were offered. Lot 3 does have a little bit altered design, where they went ahead and did a fencing design. I do have that tonight, if you'd like to see it. But it is the landscape design that was shown in your packet, plus the fencing design, and a clip of what the fencing would look like. In fact, the fencing that was decided upon is very similar to the screen fencing that is used in the district loft project with timber-like planking. Also in your packet, I was asked to just look at some alternatives for entries. Number 1 is the entry that exists, and number 2 through 4 are variations of that. Staff still does support option number 1, after a lot of discussions with our town traffic department. And those, and primarily it's for safety and traffic control reasons that we feel that is the best option. Staff recommends to Town Council to uphold the Redevelopment Commission's approval of district lofts. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. The applicant is here with a presentation, and we also have Town Traffic Engineer here to speak if you need any further information.
Thank you. For Amy at this point, questions or comments from the council? And Amy, the applicant also wished to make a few comments, is that correct?
They do have a presentation. I can see if they'd like to speak now, or would you like to wait until after? They would like to wait until after the public has spoken.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, we'll continue then with the request to speak.
Mayor, there are three people. We'll invite them up in this order. Dorleese Machado-Liddell. Following Dorleese, we'll invite up Mark Barlow, and then finally, Lyle Cody. Each one of you will have three minutes, and again, please state your name and whether you're a Gilbert resident. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Dorleese Machado-Liddell. I'm a current Gilbert resident for the past 20 years. I'm also a second-generation Portuguese-American and live in the community. I respectfully request that the town continue the public hearing on the district loft project until a traffic impact study is conducted and included in the decision as it relates to the traffic impact on the residential neighborhood. I would also like to address some of the information that was held or provided in the packet. The Town Traffic Engineer agreed that the traffic letter provided by the developer was okay. However, the letter is not attached in the packet and has never been presented in an open public meeting. The engineers stated that the trip per day did not justify a traffic impact study, stating typically, a traffic impact study is triggered around 100 peak hours. However, according to the Public Works and Engineering Standards and Details dated March 2005, and revised in March 2009, it states a TIS will be required of all developments or additions to existing developments generating 100 or more trips during morning or afternoon peak hours. And this is the case in this development. It also states that a traffic impact study may also be requested if the public perceives an adverse impact on the adjacent neighborhood, in which it does, and which I state that it does. It also states that the staff historically has not required a traffic impact study for the Heritage District. Well, historically, a development like this has not been offered to the town, because it's never been proposed in a residential area. If a traffic impact study is not conducted, the following may result, which will have a negative impact on the neighborhood. On-site congestion, inadequate access capacity, high accident experience, limited flexibility to modify the development to eliminate problems. This is directly out of the Town Guidelines. A traffic impact study must be conducted in order to make an informed decision that will impact future generations, not to make, not to mention, it makes good planning sense. I would like to add that the current proposal does not conform to the Heritage District Guidelines as it stands and as it's written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Barlow, please.
Mayor and members of the council, Mark Barlow, I'm a resident of Gilbert. I've also been on the Redevelopment Commission for nine years. I've been chair of the commission twice. I've also was the chair of the committee that created the Heritage District Design Guidelines. I've visited this neighborhood several times since this project was presented, and I've interviewed and talked to the neighbors over there. And I've looked at the width of this street, which is about 40 feet. And in my view, considering what the neighbors have told me about the number of kids that are there on bicycles, there are elderly people who go up and down Cullumber in wheelchairs and walkers, that there are improvements that should be made to this project before it's approved. And what I have in mind is that the, there is between the curb on the north side of Cullumber and the property line, there's 17 feet. And that is part of the town right-of-way. I studied the legal description today to verify that. That 17 feet is wide enough to accommodate the 10-foot-wide sidewalk, which is called for as a minimum standard in the Heritage District Design Guidelines for projects of this density. That 17-foot strip runs along the, this property line of the developer, and the railroad property is not part of the railroad property. It is part of the right-of-way. And that right-of-way could be improved with wider sidewalks to give the residents that live over there, the kids that ride on bikes, a much safer situation. I took a look at the sidewalks on the south side of Cullumber in front of I took a look at the sidewalks on the south side of Cullumber in front of the houses that were up there. And those sidewalks are old, they're about four feet wide. I also looked at the sidewalks along the west side of the park. They're also about four feet wide, they're narrow. In studying safety standards online on the internet, with federal and state and county guidelines suggest wider sidewalks. And I recall when we were putting together the guidelines for the Heritage District, we looked at that and considered that. They're there for a reason. And I believe that with the volume of traffic that'll be generated by this project, which is somewhere around 300 cars a day. Now, can you imagine living on Cullumber Street today with very little traffic, maybe what, 20 cars, the neighbors tell me, going up and down that street? And having 300 cars go by the front of your house? You wouldn't be concerned about the density and about this project? And most importantly, public safety? So I feel that this project should be continued to look at with regard to the site improvements and, excuse me, and the site development.
Thank you, Mark. And finally, Lyle Cody, please.
No, it's actually Lyle Katie.
And Lyle, you're one of the Gilbert, one of the homes, so you are a Gilbert resident for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Lyle Katie. As I said earlier, I'm a Gilbert resident. My family, which includes my wife and I, as well as our two preschool-aged boys, are fairly new to the neighborhood, but we are very excited to be a part of it. We live on Cullumber Avenue directly across from the proposed main entrance and exit of the lofts. During the purchase of our home earlier this year, we contacted the Gilbert Economic Development Department to understand what the new development across the street would be. And they did not provide very much detail. If we had known the main entrance would be directly in front of our house, increasing the chance of a collision as we exit. And with lights shining in our home windows, we would have reconsidered and possibly purchased a different home. That was back in January, February. The developer and team have been very patient and generous in trying to mitigate the car light impact on our home with landscaping. However, this would only reduce the amount of light entering our home and would not reduce the danger of a collision that I mentioned earlier. We are also afraid that the near constant lights shining into our windows, an average of two cars per minute, would lower our property value and that the exiting drivers will be looking into our home negatively impacting our privacy. Option 4, which I'm not sure has been presented, I believe you guys, you spoke about it recently, the different options and they were shown a minute ago, does not have any, I'm sorry, with the entrance in front of our house and the exit near Oak Street would alleviate our car light intrusion, privacy, and safety concerns. We understand that others in our neighborhood do not want increased traffic near their homes if the main entrance were to be moved to Oak Street where there is currently a curb cut. We feel that option 4 would equally distribute traffic on Oak and Cullumber. And we also would like you to note that Lot 1 on the corner of Oak and Cullumber does not have any windows facing the proposed exit and therefore would not be affected by car lights exiting the apartment building. Thank you for providing this forum for me to list my concerns and preferences. And once again, I ask that you please approve option 4 for the safety of my family and the quality of our time at home.
And Lyle, just to confirm again, you are which number? I know you said-
We are number 3.
Number 3, okay. Welcome to Gilbert. Okay. Vice Mayor Ray, was, were there any others?
That's all who fill out cards, Mayor.
Okay. Would the applicant wish to speak at this time?
Bear with me one moment, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, Brennan Ray, 702 East Osborne, Phoenix, Arizona, here on behalf of the applicant, Trackside Lofts LLC. As was stated, Trackside Lofts is the developer of the district lofts, which is a, proposed to be an upscale, multi-family community. It is unquestionable that this is the exact type of high-quality development that is desired and sought within the Heritage District. It is consistent in every way, as staff indicated, with the general plan, with the rezoning. The general plan designation has existed since, I believe, at least 2001, as far as it being multi-family medium, as well as the zoning, which has existed on the site, I believe, since 2005. So it's been zoned for this type of a development for a considerable amount of time. We believe that we and this development supports the Heritage District's live, work, learn, and play idea. We certainly believe that we meet and satisfy the Heritage District Design Guidelines on what is a very challenging infill odd-shaped site. We appreciate all the work that's gone in, into this development. We've worked closely, I would dare say, hand in glove with planning staff, with the Economic Development Department, and certainly with the Traffic Engineering Department, to ensure that this not only is a high-quality development, but is the type of development that is going to be safe and going to be compatible with the surrounding area. And we believe and staff supports our belief that this is an appropriate development for this site. As was mentioned, I didn't mean to hit that button. As was mentioned, and as was a condition of the appeal, we were asked to go and work specifically with Mr. Katie and his family. They are Lot 3 up there. To meet specifically with them and to address the headlight concerns. I would be a fool and I would be a liar if I was to stand up here and say that there is not some amount of impact that this development will bring. Certainly, all-new development brings an impact to an area. And this site has been vacant for quite a while. And so we not only met with the one neighbor that we were required to, but as staff indicated, we reached out to the adjoining neighbors as well, comprising lots 1 through 4. And I can certainly go into details, if this council would like, of the amount of time, energy, effort, site visits, emails, you name it. We tried everything under the sun to reach out and to work with all of these neighbors. As Mr. Katie mentioned and as staff mentioned, we believe that we have at least an appropriate mitigation plan in place for Lot 3. We certainly presented other mitigation plans to the adjoining lot. And as staff reported, and I can report as well, only one of the other three neighbors accepted that mitigation proposal. And so I'm here to report and tell you that we did exactly what we were asked to do and exactly what we said we'd do as far as working with the neighbors. We believe that staff's done an excellent job, both planning staff, engineering staff, in their presentation before the Redevelopment Commission, the discussion that was had during that time, and certainly staff's presentation and the thoroughness of their report today. Again, I can go into as much details as this council would like, but with that, I'll speak to a couple of the comments that were made, and I've already touched on some of them, with respect to the requirement of a traffic impact analysis or a traffic impact statement. We did exactly what the town's traffic engineering department did, and I will certainly not presume to speak for the town and the traffic engineering department and what they would require, what they don't require. But I can tell you that we did exactly as we were directed by staff. And with respect to the design guidelines, I know there was a comment of it, we believe and obviously it's been scrutinized by staff and a variety of different departments to ensure that we do comply with the design guidelines. And we believe that we do, and we believe that staff supports that assertion as well. And then with respect to the traffic volume, as I indicated, there is currently no traffic on there today because there is no development on the site. But we believe that, and I know Traffic Engineering agreed with us up to this point, that what we are proposing as far as the entrances and where they are located and the exit is the best solution for this development, the best solution, the safest solution for the neighborhood. And so with that, again, I'm happy to answer any questions or go into greater detail. But we certainly appreciate staff's recommendation, the Redevelopment Commission's approval, and request this council's approval in accordance with those things. So again, happy to answer any questions, Mayor, that you others might have.
Council members, are there questions for the applicant at this point? Councilmember Peterson. Okay. Thank you. Amy, if you could return. From a staff perspective, as the applicant did comment on a couple of those items, first to what Lyle brought out, if you could go to the slide that showed the four options. And we had a good discussion on Tuesday on several items and we were, the council did a good reminder to each of us that we're policymakers, so I'm not going to get into a lot of detail, but what I did hear from Lyle is that option 4 was considered. Could you just give us, what I heard is the town staff has looked at all four options. One is the recommendation. Give us maybe just a few sentences about how you feel about 4, how the town staff feels about 4, and maybe some of the reasons why 4 is not preferred by staff.
Actually, Mayor Lewis, if I could turn to our interim Town Traffic Engineer, she might help me out with some of this.
Mayor, can I just make one comment? There is an exit where options, you know, 1, 2, and 3, and 4. You can see that on option 1, which is the current design, there is a exit-only part of the property. And that is a exit that needed to be used for, I believe, public safety. They needed an ability to have access to the property. The question could be that the residents of the, of the property could use that exit on a daily basis, as well as the exit that's there in front of the Katie residence. So I just wanted to let you know that there is a exit that it could be actively used where they could come southbound or, you know, onto Oak, as well as going across on Cullumber.
Thank you. Mayor Lewis, if I could, I can walk you through these really quick, just so everyone's oriented. The main entrance for number 1 is here, there's an ingress and an egress, and there is an egress coming out, as Councilmember Cook just pointed out here. It is an unencumbered egress, so therefore, there would be a stop sign, but there's no gate. It's not an emergency access. On this one, which is number 3, and there was some discussion, I will go back and say that, about making this an emergency access only at one point. We did have a neighborhood meeting and the residents of Page Commons to the south were very adamant about limiting access onto Oak because their entrance to Page Commons is only 120 feet away from that access or exit point. So there was the discussion about potentially making that emergency only, but then that would force more traffic over to the main entrance and exit, therefore causing more potential issues with Lot 3. In this one, it, the exiting is dispersed a little more evenly. Therefore, one of the other options requested was to flip it, so the main entrance was over here. And Leslie can speak to the concerns about the intersection having the majority of the traffic. In this, in number 3, it was not only flipped, but an emergency access gate was located here so that all the traffic would be at the intersection of Cullumber and Oak. And then on this, number 4, it's ingress on the east and egress on the west. So that would bring all incoming traffic here and all outgoing traffic here unencumbered. So, but maybe Leslie could say a few words about some concerns we have as staff about the intersection of Cullumber and Oak with the additional traffic.
One additional quick question for the Katie family, so 4 is a preferred option. The 1, 2, and 4, that were also trying to meet some of their needs, have they spoken up on which option they prefer?
We have received some feedback from, I believe it was Lot 1, and I'm gonna look to Brennan, that they were in favor of item number, or option number 4. Oh, Lot 2? It was the Kates and, oh, they were the only ones. I did receive feedback from one of the other residents who lives down, she spoke this evening, who does not prefer number 4. And it was very clear that the residents of Page Commons would probably not prefer anything that put more traffic out to this intersection. So a little bit of feedback, we have not had a lot of communications with residents since the notification went out, but we did have a lot of communications during the neighborhood meetings.
Thank you. Please. Just a minute, we will get back to that in just a minute, please, continue.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Leslie Bubkey, Traffic Engineering. The concerns that we have regarding these various options really boil down to a safety concern as far as how we would try to rank them. Any of the options that would include entrance into the property via the Oak Street-aligned access, so options 2 and 3, introduce a very unusual configuration and operation at that Oak Street and Cullumber intersection. Right now, when you're approaching that corner, you know what you're going to do and you know what the other guy is going to do. And as soon as we introduce that, that straight northbound movement into the property, we've introduced a wild card that will probably lead to safety concerns and issues. There, it doesn't meet the standard of a T-intersection, so it would be difficult to sign with, with traffic control in that manner because there would be a sign for outbound at the driveway coming southbound. So it really doesn't fit into anything that drivers would expect. As far as options 1 and 4, either one is feasible from a safety perspective and for the volume perspective. And we would tip toward option number 1 for the same reasons that Amy has said earlier, that it would disperse the traffic along the available streets in the neighborhood a little better than option 4 would.
And while you're still at the microphone, and I'll allow other council members to jump in in just a moment, but Doralese was commenting about the traffic studies and had some verbiage from some documents and then also Mark Barlow. So could you make some comments about the traffic studies and how, from a town perspective, did we do what we have said we would normally do?
Of course. Our standards always include a judgment by our professionals as to whether certain activities are needed. In this particular location, yes, if you ran the trip generation numbers by all the proper references, you ended up with 108 trips in one of the peak hours. 100 is our standard. Trips includes any way, mode of travel into or out of a site. So in this particular location, we felt that the proximity to two active transit routes on Elliot Road and on Gilbert Road would mean that there was probably a better percentage than most locations where people would just walk to the bus and that would be their trip. Or a trip can be by walking north to the Heritage District, you know, for an evening meal. All of those are trips, walking, biking, bus, car. So the tipping point of 100 trips, we felt, although it was met, we did not feel that we would gain much knowledge by demanding a traffic impact study for this site.
And the comments from Mark Barlow about the 17 feet, do you have some feedback on that?
I'm afraid I don't, don't know very much about the right-of-way along these streets other than it exists.
And Amy, do you know about the 17 feet?
Mayor Lewis, the 17-foot discussion, to be honest, it's the first I've heard of it. I was aware of the sidewalk discussion, but as far as, I do know that it was brought up at Redevelopment Commission that they'd like to see sidewalk and landscape continued across the railroad property. And at the time, we thought it's railroad property, but it is off-site to the project and it would probably have to be a town project to do those additional improvements. But we have not, as staff, discussed the 17 feet or any of the results of what would come of that.
Okay. And a comment to Mr. Katie and then I'll open it up to council. I do want to make sure that you're heard in following procedures of a public hearing. Once you've had a chance to speak, potentially we could bring you back up, but most likely I'll have Amy in a minute if you could make sure and just find out from Mr. Katie, when we were talking about the options, he had a specific comment he wanted to make, and if we can get that and make sure it's included in a minute. But council members, let's open it up. So Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I'm sorry you were getting at some, some, two of the questions that I had as well, and I'm not sure I totally followed them, so I'm gonna just follow up on that a little bit. First of all, I just want to be clear, is a traffic impact study required according to our guidelines? to our guidelines?
It would meet the definition unless waived by the traffic engineer.
So, when you say unless waived, and I'll look to our town attorney. Mike, do we have the right to waive guidelines at discretion? Is this one that specifically, we have a right to do that? Can you kind of help guide that question?
Mayor, Councilman Peterson, I don't know that anymore, but I can find out in just a couple of moments.
And then let me just get some clarification on the guideline related to, suggested guideline that Mr. Barlow talked about, as far as the sidewalk widths, any other design guidelines? Are there, are they meeting all the design guidelines? That's really what I'm trying to get after here.
Councilmember Peterson and Mr. Mayor, the guidelines, I did find the area in the code after that was brought up at the Redevelopment Commission, and doing a six-foot sidewalk is not an issue. 10-foot sidewalk in the way, mind you, they're guidelines. It was written so that the 10-foot was in the HVC, which is the Commercial District, the PFI, and the MFM, a more intensive area. This is, as the neighbors have pointed out, a more residential neighborhood, and that is where the six-foot sidewalks are required. So to have a six-foot sidewalk there would be in keeping, they're wider than what is with the existing older sidewalks in the neighborhood, and there's not a huge volume of traffic. I mean, there is pedestrian traffic, I'm not going to say there's not, and yes, there are handicapped individuals that do come from Page Commons and go to the park, there are children that ride bikes, I'm not saying there's not. Staff believed, and discussions with traffic, believe that five-to-six-foot sidewalk is adequate for this project on the north side of the road, especially when it was non-contiguous and it was not continuing on to the east at this point in time. So we did not enforce the 10-foot, they are guidelines, and as we just mentioned, that staff has the wherewithal to make some decisions regarding what is appropriate, and this is a neighborhood and six-foot was deemed appropriate.
I guess I would look for the same kind of guidance there, and the trouble I have is that I've asked a previous town attorney about this question about guidelines, and if we have the right to discretion, that we can choose to be lenient on them or not. And I've gotten a very different answer than what you seem to suggest, so I want to, the bottom line is, I have great concern for the legal right of this property owner to develop his property under the use, but my same respect for the law also demands that I answer the question about complying with all the legal guidelines, and I just want to make sure I understand that, so.
Mayor Lewis, Councilman Peterson, what is your second question, sir?
Trying to understand, it sounds like there's a guideline related to sidewalk widths that we may also not be meeting, and I'm just curious if legally we have the right to waive that, if we feel that it's appropriate in professional opinion, or if that's not discretion that we have. I don't know the answer to that.
And Mayor Lewis and Councilman Peterson, the first one, please, the first question. The second one with regards to sidewalks, whether that's a guideline or...
The first one was related to the traffic impact study.
Okay.
That's another, I guess, guideline, it's a different, it's not a design guideline, it's another guideline, traffic guideline, whether or not we have the right to waive that.
While that's still being discussed...
And with that being said, Mayor Lewis, if I may, we did analyze landscape and all the other features as part, as against the, and we did integrate those into the site. So Linda Edwards, the manager, says that there is a graphic that actually shows six-foot in that location, and she has found it, and it is shown in orange. And the larger sidewalks, as I indicated, were in the more commercial areas that are more intensive uses, such as around St. Xavier University, around the restaurants in downtown, and that is where we're holding to those sizes. So, and I will zoom out, see, I was looking for the chart to, the legend to show, here it is. Six-foot sidewalk is in orange, six-foot sidewalk along Columber.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook also, but if your comment is still tied to that, okay, so Councilmember Cook, and then we'll come back.
Well, the appeal was not about sidewalks, just to let everyone know, and that wasn't really part of the appeal process, but what I want to say is that the appeal was really based upon the light coming from the cars at night onto the Katie residence. That was really my concern. And at the Redevelopment Commission, the developer and the applicant did make a verbal as to what they would, you know, obviously proceed with. The appeal was really to put the plan in place and in agreement, you know, with the Katie residence. That was really the intent of the appeal. Part two of the appeal was that in some case, in a case where, let's say, there was not an agreement with the whatever type of vegetation or structure, the thought was maybe the entrance and exit could move over to the west, and so forth. And I do know that the residents that are in the apartment complexes directly to the west, they did voice a strong dislike for that. But I do know that we've had some projects in the past where, you know, I can remember the one over on Higley and Guadalupe where it was a car wash, and I remember us having that discussion about the lights bleeding over into the property owners, and I know that we voted as a team not to have that project go through, and lighting was one of those reasons. So I do have a question with Amy and the Katie family. I thought I heard from Amy that there was an email that indicated that the Katie family was in agreement with the discussion with the applicant, but from hearing from Mr. Katie, it almost seemed to contradict. Maybe not, but I know his preference is to have option four, but let's say if option four were not to happen tonight, would they be okay with their collaboration of that light mitigation efforts?
And I'll turn to the applicant, who has the documentation of what he received from the Kates', in an email, I believe.
Before we do that, to our town attorney, this is something I haven't done before, and we need a few more minutes of dialogue, and I, we'll get to a conclusion. I probably should have done this earlier, but 29 is open, so the public hearing stays open. I believe on 30 and 34, they were going to be fairly quick discussions. Are we allowed to interrupt 29, and if I'm correct, get 30 and 34 done, and then come back to 29?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that's correct.
Would, and to Councilmember Peterson on 34, am I correct that that was going to be fairly quick? Okay. All right, let me, because I know you're looking at a few things on 29, and that's one reason why I'm going to suggest this. 29 stays open, and let me go to 34 first. Let me open the public hearing on 34, and Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I'll make my comment very brief, but I do have a slight amendment that would be favorable to Cox. Whether or not the rest of the council's interested, I don't know, but I'll just make it really brief, what my thought is here. You know, on this issue, there's really a big difference between what I think the law is, or what I thought it was when we had the hearing, and what I thought the law should be. And of course, in the hearing, our job was to decide what the law was. In other words, what did they owe according to the code? And we were required to answer that question, and my honest opinion continues to be that, you know, that they underpaid based on the definition in the code. However, tonight, I want to address the second question, which is what should the law be, or what should they pay? My answer is that I believe the law specifies a fee that's too high. I think 5% of gross revenues is too high a price to pay, when some publicly traded companies, their profit margins have been less than that. I think it's wrong that we might make more charging for Cox's passive use of the right-of-way than what they might make in providing the actual cable service to their customers. Now, they're not publicly traded, so I don't know their financials, but just as an example. Anyway, according to staff's estimate, the proposed change, which clarifies how Cox can allocate their discount, will have an effect of creating an additional revenue of about $50,000 a year. In light of that, I've asked staff to also estimate what rate we could lower to and maintain that same, the same total revenues as we had before that increase. And that rate is 4.8% instead of 5. So, while I would be personally open to an even further cut, I feel that this may be a viable compromise, as it would be revenue-neutral, or in other words, it wouldn't reduce our overall revenues from what they have been historically. So that was it, and my comment, and I have a motion ready for that, and that's what I wanted to...
Yeah, as for item of clarification, we'll go to Vice Mayor Ray. If we were to make a change, and this is to our town attorney, that would be for future, and could we even do that tonight? It's not on the agenda. We'd have to put it on, I assume, on a different agenda, council meeting, and then have discussion on public notice and so forth, but let's say that's correct, and we did want to do that, that wouldn't change what we're voting on tonight. So it could be something in the future, but not for tonight.
Mayor, members of the council, the agenda item 34 is a proposed amendment to section 1826 of the town code. 1826 is the section that sets the rate. So an amendment, if passed by the council to lower the rate to 4.8%, if seconded and passed by the majority of the council, would be appropriate, as this item has been agendized.
Okay, so that could happen tonight?
That could.
And that would benefit Cox immediately? Is that right?
30 days from now.
30 days, okay. Vice Mayor Ray?
So I'm all for lowering rates when appropriate. My only concern is that it's, I don't see any justification for this number, really, other than it might be the same they're paying before. I would rather look at what are the typical rates with other jurisdictions, and what are other companies like Cox paying, instead of just, as it comes up, changing numbers for different companies. And so I'm all for looking at lowering the numbers, but I would hate to vote on something like this, when we really have no idea what other impacts it has, and what other companies similar to Cox, what they're paying, and why they're paying that.
And real fast, Councilmember Peterson, to our town attorney, for example, Century Link, we have a similar service, similar contract, is their rate different than 5%?
Mayor, members of the council, it would all be the same. Their rate would also lower to 4.8%.
Okay, so this, this would...
This would apply to anyone who had a cable license within the town.
Okay. Vice Mayor Ray, thank you for your comment, and then did I interrupt you, Councilmember Peterson?
He said what I was going to explain. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, other comments or questions? Do we have any direct, one of the comments I give from Council, Vice Mayor Ray's comment is I, I think from a council perspective, we want to be fair, we want our businesses to feel like they're good partners. It seems a little bit, I don't know if hurried is the right word, because you may have thought it out and may be able to help us feel comfortable with, but it's kind of just a quick curveball, maybe even a fastball, but...
Mayor, I would, if it gives it a better chance of passing, I'm okay with continuing that question to a future meeting, but I understand your comment, I know, I've mentioned it previously, in two other public meetings, but I understand, you know, it may be sudden for some of the council.
Right, and even a study session might have helped to give us a couple of days to think about it, but that's, that's learning for me, too.
You're right, it was just such a busy session, you're right.
Okay. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. If I may, you know, I look at this with all the items here, and I would just add that the discussion that Cox has been good partners, as you identified, and they've made a lot of concessions through this process that I think are more than reasonable, and for us to, you know, recognize that, this would apply to everyone, so it would be fair to all of them, and I'd support continuing the discussion, no problem at all, but I do like the suggestion, and I think it is an acknowledgement of all the concessions and the good partnership that they've already shown in the other agenda items that we've approved, so that's something I'd add.
And Councilmember Taylor, would your thought be stick with the five for tonight, but have a discussion at a future council meeting?
Well, I'd rather just continue it, if, you know, and then make a decision, let's not delay it. If it's going to impact some continuance of service or contracts or something like that, yeah, let's get something tonight, so there's no break in service, but if we can pick this up at the next council meeting, end of June, and we carry forward, perhaps that would work, too.
Mayor, members of the council, the agreement and the license and the amendment to the code as proposed into the packet should be passed tonight, if it's the desire of the council to move on this proposed settlement. If in fact there are additional amendments that the council would like to make to the code, that should be addressed on, well, that can be amended tonight, but the whole package shouldn't be postponed to hear those amendments.
Sure. And what I'm hearing with these last two comments is that we would like to talk about it, and I'm hearing Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Taylor say they're okay if we proceed tonight and put the potential change in the percentage to another meeting. So, if I were to close the public hearing, are we ready to?
Just quickly, can we clarify that it would be the next council meeting?
Study session first?
Study session first? Okay, I just want to get specifics of the next study session. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Now, is there a study session at the end of June, or is the next one in July? Just to be specific.
Mayor, members of the council, September is the next scheduled study session.
Mayor, if it's a date certain, I'm okay. I'd rather move more quickly, but anyway.
Okay.
Mayor Lewis, may I, we've been discussing this for over a year now, and to just now to have a plan presented, I'm not comfortable making any changes at all with, this has been a very long time coming. We've spent a tremendous amount of time and money, taxpayer money, in order to get where we are right now, and I would suggest that we move forward with this plan as quickly as possible, and that we don't waste any more time. If there is a plan that would like to be presented, we'll need three signatures, just like anything else.
And I think for Councilmember Peterson, it could be based on September or earlier, if for some reason another study session is scheduled.
Mayor, members of the council, the next scheduled study session is September 22nd.
Mayor, I don't know, I know the rest of the council doesn't know that I've been planning this, because of open meeting law reasons, some may know. I've mentioned the idea repetitively to some of the staff members, and so it's not really new, it's just that I have to be able to get it in a public meeting, and this is an opportunity to do that. So if we can get, I can pass around a paper, but we can also do it with nods, that's perfectly legal, if we get at least three nods for that meeting.
Okay, and I think we do, I think we have that, and I'm, because you asked for a specific date, it would be September or earlier, because there may be another study session scheduled prior to the September one. Okay, so with that, I close the public hearing on agenda item 34, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 34.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion second, please vote. That's approved with a 7-0 vote. Thank you again.
I'm sorry, Mayor, who was your second? Thank you.
I open the public hearing on agenda item 30. Now, my understanding, to Vice Mayor Ray, is that on 30, 30, if there was no discussion, I might just close 30, and we did have one person who wished to speak if there was some concern, and I'll just give us, my summary of agenda item 30 is related to tremendous efforts by many citizens and some who are here in the room, related to the topic of behavioral health, and working with town staff, I think many involved for your patients. And the discussions made improvements, and so I think we're at a point tonight to move forward on 30, and so I will open the public hearing on agenda item 30, and close the public hearing on agenda item 30, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 30.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I wanted to just make a comment after this, and happy to see the 7-0 vote on that. I wanted to just recognize and appreciate, Patrick, you and your staff... I wanted to just recognize and appreciate, Patrick, you and your, your staff going above and beyond with feedback. I know this is a lot longer than anybody really wanted to, and then also let you know how much I appreciated Jordan Feld's participation here, and I received multiple, you know, people that commented on how even-handed he was with everyone and all the stakeholder groups, and I think it's important in something like this, you know, to recognize some outstanding, you know, behavior from your team, and appreciate what we've been able to accomplish here tonight. So Mayor, thank you for the time.
Thank you. We return to 29, and I know you've had some discussion, and I might just ask the question, is there any feedback you've just received as we return to 29 that would be helpful?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council. The requirement of a traffic study is a code requirement based on the number of trips or vehicles involved. It can be waived by the traffic engineer based on technical merit if it's felt not to be necessary, but it cannot be imposed if it doesn't meet the standards for, you know, the, the standards that would normally require it. So in that sense, it's discretionary, but only if it's waived, not to be imposed if, if the technical aspects aren't present. With regard to the sidewalk width, the heritage, there are several statements in the Heritage Guidelines. One is that the Heritage District Guidelines are flexible, but with regards to the sidewalks, it indicates they should be a minimum of 10 feet. However, there is a Heritage District bicycle and pedestrian circulation map, which indicates that on this street, it's, should be at least six feet. So you've got several factors there. One is a general opinion of flexibility. Two, a, a general requirement of 10 feet in the Heritage District for sidewalk width. But third, a specific map that suggests that a, a circulation and bicycle map suggests that south of the track in those, in those neighboring, neighborhood areas, that the sidewalk width should be six feet.
Okay, thank you.
And that was the basis for the imposition of a six-foot sidewalk width in this instance.
To the council, there's been one additional request to speak, and this is one of the four families, and this might be appropriate to have that become part of this, just so we can get some more feedback, and then I might even, after this comment from another citizen, I might turn it back to Councilmember Cook. I know you've been actively involved with the appeal, and then you'll have some comments, so if you could give us a summary right after this...
I would like to make one comment, is that, let's say the traffic study were to come, because that's really, I think, the question, and let's say the traffic study came with a letter grade of an F. The project would not be stopped because of that traffic study, and I believe if the traffic study came back with a letter grade of an F, and required right away to be taken to improve the traffic load, that's not going to happen. So I'm not sure the traffic study is actually a valid kind of line of question if it doesn't impact the project. So I'm not sure where this is going. If the traffic study, if it came back with a, a bad report, would, would do anything with the project, the project would still continue. So I'm not sure here about that line of thinking here. I just want to bring that up.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray? Miss, the Figaro family?
Yeah, we invite up, I believe it's Ahisia Navarro Figaroa. If you would just state your name like the others have, and let us know which address you are.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ahisia Navarro. I am speaking on behalf of my grandmother, who is Carmen Figaroa. We reside at lot number four, as seen on the screen. Just as a, she purchased this house in 1964, so this is a big difference when we consider adding these luxury lofts that are going to bring in an excess of an additional 100, 200, 300 cars, if you consider each loft might have two vehicles. Anyhow, we just wanted to make certain that it was clear that our voices were being heard in communication with Mr. Brennan. We did express the concern, and, and greater than that, we did say if we had a choice of options one, two, three, or four, that four was our preferred mechanism of entry and exit to help mitigate some of the concerns for safety. There are lots of children in the neighborhood, there are bikes and elderly people coming from Page Commons, going up and down on their, on their wheelchairs, walking their dogs. I believe with Amy, Amy also suggested that they did approach us for mitigation purposes, and they suggested that a wall be built in front of the yard to help lessen some of the light, just as, as kind of an indication as to the amount of help this would give. The wall was a total of six, excuse me, 36 inches high, so a three-foot pony wall from a distance from the exit and entrance of the loft would not do much to mitigate the light that's coming in through the front window of our home. Just something to consider. Our voices were expressed via email, that was received by Mr. Brennan, and we just wanted to make certain that our voices were definitely communicated, not only to the developers, but also to the council.
Thank you. Now, if I heard right, that was your grandma?
Grandmother, yes.
So 51 years ago, 1964, which, memory from the trend of population, Gilbert was about 4,000 residents in, so...
Next to nothing.
So you tell your grandma how much we love and appreciate her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, back to Councilmember Cook, because what you were getting to in the appeal and so forth, give us some direction as to how we should proceed.
And I did get to meet the grandmother on my journey of knocking on the doors as well, and again, absolutely correct. I wanted to make sure that the residents had an opportunity to learn about the project. The one thing that was really wonderful was that the applicant and the owners didn't have to do this, but they did have an opportunity to provide a community meeting, which was wonderful. They, they invited the residents there to speak, and they shared about the project. So again, in the spirit of, you know, being one team in Gilbert, and in the spirit of collaboration, this process, I've been very satisfactory as it relates to the ability to have all the voices heard, and everyone's opinion at least valued. So that part was, I'm very proud of. Thank you for our staff for, again, orchestrating that whole process, that's been really good. But again, back to the, the original intent that I was more concerned about, was that this project is going to be there for a long time, and the residents that are on the south side of Columber are, are, could be severely impacted by the light that comes from this, this project, and I just wanted to make sure that we vetted all possibilities to help minimize the light pollution that would be coming from the lights, as well as the possibility of maybe moving the, the entrance and exit to the, to the west. So that was really what the appeal was about.
And do you have a recommendation about how we should proceed now?
Well, again, I wanted to go back to the, the comment that Amy said, related to the communication from the Katie family. I thought I heard that they said that there would be an agreement to the collaboration of whatever the mitigation of the lighting, but then I heard that it sounds like the, the Katie family would obviously prefer option four, which I agree.
And I know we have an option...
Right.
...to have Mr. Katie come back. Would you prefer that, to hear it straight from him?
Well, again, I just want to make sure that if option four were, were not to happen, that the light mitigation efforts in the collaboration between the two teams, that they would be okay with. That's what I wanted to find out, and I thought the email may have stated that.
Council, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Cook, it is my understanding the email did state that, it was just emailed to me, but Brennan Ray, the applicant's attorney, can speak to that briefly, if you would allow.
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, with respect to the content of the communications that I had with the Katie family, certainly Mr. Katie can confirm that, and I can provide copies of the emails if necessary, but the way I understood it is that they did, that presuming option one were to be approved by the town council tonight, that they would accept the mitigation that we had worked tirelessly with them. And so that's, that's my understanding. I will also say that they did state a preference, as Mr. Katie did tonight, for option four, but again, should the council act tonight and approve what was done by the redevelopment commission, we will honor the stipulation that was made, the commitments that have been made, and certainly the plan that we have worked and gone back and forth with the Kates on.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, with that, Mayor, the, the tough part about this would be, which one is the better solution between the two? Because I know that if we did do option four, the, the residents to the west were not in favor of that. So I guess we're here to decide really what would be probably the best solution for all at this point.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I really couldn't have said it better myself, and I'm sorry that I'm not addressing what everyone thinks the discussion's supposed to be about this, but you just hit the nail on the head, I think you're right. No matter which approach we take, there's going to be trade-offs, the trade-offs. Some people will be benefited more by one way, to the detriment of some others, and any option's going to have that, those trade-offs, and so we have to decide which one has the least impact to the least people, to the least degree. We want to do that as much as possible. My personal opinion is because of the size of Page Commons, the number of people impacted there, plus the traffic concerns by all the traffic professionals we know of, I think option one is probably the most appropriate design. But it makes me sad that we can't accommodate everyone perfectly, I just, I don't know that that's possible. So now that I've addressed that, and you understand my perspective so far as that question goes, and I want to apologize again, I didn't mean to open a can of worms, but when I hear people talking about legal requirements that may have, may not, may or may not have been satisfied, when I've read through a packet that assures me that all of them have been, and that's the first time I've ever heard any indication of that, I have, I have an oath to the ordinances of the town of Gilbert, and I have to make sure that I'm taking heed to that. So I'm sorry if that, I feel, it feels like I'm irrelevant with my conversation, but I'm really just trying to make sure I'm doing my duty tonight. And so I just want to get a clear, clear, straight answer from our town attorney. Mike, are you saying you feel that we are, would be on solid legal ground to waive those require, it seems like one of the requirements, there's some ambiguity in, and so that seems a little gray. Are we on firm legal ground to go with the smaller sidewalk as, as shown on the map? And then the other one, about the traffic impact study, are we on firm legal ground to, to waive that? That's all I'm trying to understand. I want to make sure we're not, you know, ignoring laws that we're supposed to uphold.
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Peterson, we are on firm legal ground with regards to the sidewalk width. The specific requirement there is for a six-feet sidewalk, six-foot width sidewalk. With regard to the traffic study, the, it was right at the minimum that would be required for a traffic study. However, the engineer waited, waived it, as was in, and I'm not sure if it was when Mr. Gudarian was here, or, or Ms. Leslie was here, when, when that decision was made, but that was entirely within her discretion. It was based on the view that since it was right at the minimum that would normally require a traffic study, based upon a greater-than-average pedestrian traffic, as well as a, as well as bus traffic on that street, it was waived, and it was entirely within her discretion to waive it. And so that authority is provided to her under the, the LDC and the Heritage District Guidelines. So that, that's also on firm legal ground. Thank you.
Mayor, and I'm sorry for that, I just wanted to make sure, and so far as whether or not those particular approaches make sense from a logical perspective, as far as the size of the sidewalk, and whether or not we should do a traffic study in that case, I think it's reasonable that we don't need to for the traffic study, and that the sidewalks are fine, but I just, I needed to understand the legal implications, and again, I apologize for all the time I've spent on that. I'm comfortable moving forward, and I've already expressed my opinion on which option I think is to the best interest of the most people as much as possible.
Councilmember Cook, how do you feel?
Well, I want to thank the applicant and their efforts. I know that they spent a lot of time working with four residents, they were only required to work with one, and so they made a major effort. It looks like there was a prudent compromise that, that was decided, and with that, I would be okay moving forward.
Okay. All right, Vice Mayor Ray?
I appreciate all those who have gone to extra efforts to, to give us as much information as they have. I do want to make this clear, that this is not something where this current council is rezoning property to put in apartments that was zoned for something else. This has been zoned for years for this very type of property. And I appreciate the applicant for their efforts in making themselves available to answer any questions for us, and also staff as well. I wish we could do something that would accommodate everyone, that everyone could leave tonight happy and feel like they won. It does not sound like that's possible. I'm leaning towards option one as well.
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I, I don't want to prolong the discussion, I think Vice Mayor Ray said a lot of what I would have, have just said, so I echo that, and have similar thoughts.
Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. Probably should just say ditto at this point, but it isn't unheard of for us to allow a resident to have another opportunity to speak during the public hearing, and I don't wish to put either you or Vice Mayor Ray on the spot, but we do have a resident that would like to voice one more opinion, and I think in the spirit of what we're here for, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. And Councilmember Peterson?
I agree with that, Mayor, and I'm also comfortable with option one. I attended the neighborhood meeting that Councilmember Cook keeps referring to, and the neighbors there were very adamant from Page Commons, and looking at the design, and looking at the traffic study, I mean, the traffic discussion that we had at that meeting, and hearing everything from the planning staff, I, I'm comfortable with that option, and again, like, has been stated that the least impact to the least amount of people, and unfortunately, it does happen to be the Katie family. We've seen very similar mitigations with other projects, 130th Street, right over here, where Station Seven's going, we put in a neighborhood right there with basically the same options. So I'm very comfortable moving forward, and I, and I agree with Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you. So before we have Mr. Katie come back up, to our legal team, as I started this conversation, and a good reminder about policy is what the council's trying to do, and not to get into the details, and I, at this point, could not give a real strong opinion on one or four, other than what I've heard, and we even had one of our town team members say that one or four would work, so let's say we proceed and vote, and it's then implied that one is the decision. Can there still be some dialogue that can continue, that could be without council being part of that, that the applicant, the homeowner could still have some dialogue, and if option four ended up being selected, that could happen, even if we voted tonight, which implied one?
Mayor, members of the council, I think if you voted tonight for an option, any change to another option would have to come before the council.
Okay, thank you.
Now, it, it may be that discussions might arise at different trees, or some kind of, you know, other things could be planted in different areas, but I, town staff would not be able to approve a design of option four, for example, if the council voted for option one this evening.
All right, thank you. And Vice Mayor Ray, because when we make exceptions to have a citizen come back up three minutes, would that work, or two minutes, or what would you recommend?
I think two minutes would be appropriate.
Okay. To Mr. Katie, please.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again, I really appreciate it, and I apologize for interrupting earlier. First of all, I just want to read the opening, the last correspondence that I had with the developers, my wife and I. We said, "We read the council agenda packet for the June 4th meeting, and the town provided four options for the driveway. We prefer option four in the report attached, where the entry is in front of Oak and the exit is at, is in front of our lot, and the exit is at Oak. Please consider this option as it would still split the traffic 50/50 on Columber, Ave, and Oak, and no one would have traffic light impacts, since the houses at the corner has no windows facing the exit. We very much appreciate the landscaping to mitigation, the lights, but prefer that there are no lights to mitigate at all." So we are preferring option four, we have made that very clear, that that would, is what we want over mitigation, that's only a last resort for us. I don't know why neighbors weren't informed of these four options in this community, I think it demonstrates a lack of communication from the planning department. I want to say that the, the senior living tenants are renters, and they already live in an apartment, and that is the aesthetic where they live. And that is the aesthetic where they live. So an apartment and a drive, extra commuting near apartments, it does not affect them as much as it affects owners. And also, the neighbor who is opposed to option four does not live on the north, directly across from this community, and is not as adversely affected by any of the four options, in my opinion. The traffic specialist did say that option four is acceptable, and it's the, I don't see what the problem would be for this option. I don't think this should be rubber stamped. This is something that, once a developer is done with, it will be done with them. But I'm going to continue living there for many, many years, and so are my children. And please reconsider this for a vote on option four.
Thank you. Amy, could you return, please? This is just to help the council here again. Can you review again of these four families that have the greatest impact, what options they prefer?
Now, Mayor Lewis, I just want to say that I have not been in direct discussions with these families. I have been receiving this information from the applicant and their attorneys. So this is my underst-
And you've got your quality advisors right there in case so, but-
So if they start tossing something at me. It is my understanding that lot number one preferred number four. They were offered vegetation mitigation and wall mitigation and preferred not to have either. Lot number two has accepted landscape mitigation. I do not believe that they made any inference on a preferred option. Lot number three, you heard from Mr. Katie. And lot number four, you've heard from the Figaroas. So they were each offered landscape and walls and a combination thereof. The Figaroas have preferred not to have any of that, and the Kates have accepted both a wall and landscape as an option if the driveways aren't switched.
Thank you. And then as a summary again, my understanding is that option four negatively impacts many others, including Page Commons, from our town staff analysis. Is that correct?
All the traffic coming out of option number four would tend to go down Oak, from what I'm understanding from talks, discussions with traffic engineers. And that there would be some that would turn and go on Cullumber, but a majority would just go straight down to the next street, turn left, and then disperse either south or east. Incoming would most likely come up Ash or on Park and then turn and go up Cullumber. There would be no real reason for them to continue down Park, go up Oak, and then circle back. So it is the exiting traffic that would primarily cause the majority to go down Oak. Whereas we felt with number one, exiting traffic as they come out of the project would either go half, those coming from the west would go down Oak, and those coming toward the east would go down Cullumber, and it would disperse a little more evenly. And that was the thought process.
Thank you. If the applicant could please come back. On the options one and four, is there a significant cost difference in what will be the end result for the applicant?
Mayor, let me confer with my client. I believe the answer to that is yes, but if you'll just give me a moment to confer. Mayor, after conferring with Colin Brown, who is with Trackside Lofts LLC, there would be significant costs associated, separate and apart, that we would also echo the concerns, the safety concerns of that particular intersection being uncontrolled. So it's the cost, and then it's the safety concerns associated with option number four.
Okay. So this, back to trying to stay at the policy level, I am not able to help with one versus four. I know that we would like to find solutions that work for the majority, if not everyone. But I'm hearing that the council's ready to proceed. Is there any other questions or discussion any of you would like to have? Okay, I close the public hearing on agenda item 29, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 29, which is to reaffirm the decision of Redevelopment Commission, which would be option one. And I just want to make a quick comment. I appreciate everyone's patience with me. And I didn't mean to imply, I hope no one had felt, that others didn't care about the law or their oath of office. I was particularly confused because I had a different opinion from a previous town attorney that seemed to contradict what I was hearing tonight. So I appreciate everyone's patience on that. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, with that motion, second, please vote. Let's approve with a seven of all. Thank you. We move to agenda item 40. I open the public hearing on agenda item 40. And councilmember Peterson, you had a request to make a comment on that.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. First of all, I have another apology to make. I'm really sometimes good at that. But in the study session, I made a comment about the tax increase that we're faced with here. I just want to make it clear, I don't think anyone on this council wants to raise taxes. I really don't think anyone has that on their to-do list. All right? I'm sorry for my clumsy expression, which may seem to have implied that. Now, we had a great discussion in the study session. I learned lots of things that I usually like to learn before the meeting. It's been busy for staff, for me, and everyone else. And so some of that didn't happen as early as I wanted. But I'm not going to rehash all that. I've got three simple points. First, I'll just say that we don't currently have a formal policy for the minimum fund balance in the debt service fund. Okay? And I think we probably should have one, especially in light of recent changes in state law that affect how that policy might look. So, you know, by the suggestion of Don Buckland, and I appreciate it, I would suggest that council, or I'm sorry, we would direct staff to come back with maybe a draft policy. I would prefer it by the June 25 meeting, where we would adopt the final levy as related to this. So if we wanted to make adjustments at that time, we could. So that was my first comment, then I had two others. But I can kind of see if there's agreement from other councilmembers before I proceed.
Any other comments on agenda item 40 from other councilmembers? Councilmember Taylor?
Let me just question the councilmember Peterson's question. Victor, are you just asking if we wanted to have a policy come back? Because I think you had other points you were making.
I do. I've got two others. Before I proceed, I want to make sure if others agree that we should have some kind of minimum fund policy related to the debt service fund, as we currently do not have one, that we would have, you know, at least three who would want to direct staff to create that policy.
Thank you. That's good clarification. And that really hits to the question that I asked when there was some good discussion in studies. You know, what should it be? And I think we could answer that with a policy-level discussion. So I would support it.
So we proceed tonight, but then ask for that to be added to a June 25 agenda item. Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, I would agree, except for the two-week timeframe. I know that there's so much going on between now and the 25th. I would really love for us to think this all the way through for two different reasons. Number one is that we no longer can actually add dollars to the minimum fund balance because that option that we, I guess, utilized previously. So having a minimum fund balance discussion is really more of a, what's the minimum amount we're going to leave in that account until forever? Because we can't, under current state law, add to that account anymore. So I think the question is a little bit different, but I 100% agree that, I love policies. We need a policy to help guide this. And the second point really is that time, I think time is needed to think. When we came up with our other financial policies, we took quite a bit of time, and I think it's important, especially if Don sadly is no longer going to be with us after today. So.
Is there a timeframe that you do think would be reasonable?
I think by the time the retreat, I don't wish to add it to the retreat. I saw that draft agenda. But I think by the time the retreat comes around, that that may be about, the timing could be about right, because that policy actually isn't going to be enacted until really the next fiscal year.
Any other comments from council?
Mayor, I just have a couple. And I'm okay with that. It's better later than never. Again, if it's too much to handle between now and then, I can understand that. But we are making a decision to draw down on that balance, and we don't have a policy in place to decide whether or not that drawdown even, you know, makes sense in light of the things we should be considering. So that's my concern there. Maybe, I don't know if we could ask staff their opinion on the timeframe and just kind of see what they think.
To our town manager?
Mayor, members of the council, a couple things come to mind that we were just talking about here at the desk. If we set a minimum, and it deserves thoughtful consideration, and we're certainly open to having a policy, some of the things that come up, not having the ability to add to it in the future, that if we set a minimum fund balance policy as a percentage of the debt service payment in any given fiscal year, when that payment goes up, that means we would need to take, find funding, take funding from another source to place it into the debt service reserve fund to meet that minimum fund balance policy. So probably just some things we want to think through. And if we could have as much time as the council deemed appropriate to do that, I think we'd be grateful for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Mayor, with that, that's fine. And I just had a couple more comments, and I'll try and keep them very brief. So I've passed out, and I've got some stuff for staff if they're, I know everyone loves my charts. Okay, maybe not, but hopefully they help illustrate what I'm trying to talk about.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor, if I could, is there one more copy here of this?
We're fine. We can share.
Okay, we're sharing here.
There is, and there is.
Sorry, I'm not counting and talking and chewing gum very well at the same time. Okay, so my second point, again, just briefly, I think we all want to avoid the property tax increase. In this case, if we go with staff's proposal, I appreciate that the levy can go up less than it might. The chart would be first. Thank you so much, Don. If we go with their proposal, I understand that we would use some fund balance to decrease the amount that the levy would go up. I love that. I do appreciate that. But no matter how we slice it, we've got both the rate and the total levy are going up. And so whichever metric you look at, it's going up. Now, I don't know if we can really debate that. I understand there could be a debate about who's responsible for that increase. Yes, taxpayers did approve debt, and we are obligated to pay it. But the average taxpayer would want us to pay it without a tax increase if there is a responsible alternative, especially when there is a fund balance that resulted in a temporary, and I will say well-meaning, overtaxation that can only be used for paying off that same debt. Okay? So finally, I think that we're pretty close to the same page with probably what I've said so far. And so the question really is about what's responsible. So I just wanted to throw this up there, delinquency rates. For the last 10 years, I don't know if you can see it on the screen very well, but it maxed out at the height of the recession at 4.8%. So that's really as bad as it gets. And, you know, legally, we found it defensible. Now, last year, we didn't have the last bullet point. The fiscal year 14 point was missing. So in fairness, we didn't have all that data. But we had the previous points, and even in light of that trend, we found it legally defensible to charge a 5% delinquency contingency. And so I'm just saying, we've got options. Legally, we've got options. And so we can talk about, we can never recharge the fund, and really, you can't. So I, thank you, you're right about that, all those who've said that. You can't really directly recharge it. But on the other hand, if you overcharge one year, you get that, and you have to, but you get that as a source for the next year. So what I'm saying is there's ways to deal with contingency. And then you can, for the next year, you can also think about what the contingency amount should be. And so, and one last thing about delinquency. If you think about it, delinquency doesn't mean you don't get paid for it. It just means it's delayed. Okay? I know the tax, the property tax system in Arizona, how they sell tax liens, and I won't go into those details, but the bottom line is, it's really just a delay in those funds. So they're going to come back. And so the amount of fund balance that we should need, so long as we're not going beyond, and this will go to the next slide. And then I'm done. Sorry. I'm sorry. This may be just too complex for now. I apologize if it is. But the bottom line is, even if we supposed that we would have a delinquency rate of 4% for every year until the end of all of our debt service payments, okay? Plus, we use what I'm proposing, which is 3.3 million of that fund balance, which sounds pretty scary, I understand. Even if we believed that it was a 4% delinquency from here on out, and that that was a cumulative effect, which it wouldn't be, would be a delay, that money would come back in, you still would have more than enough money in the fund balance to make all those payments. And so that is a very conservative estimate. I'm just saying, I don't see any way, now, look, we have more to think about. I understand that. I appreciate that. But I would rather err on the side of lower taxes than on the other side. And so that's my proposal. You know, I'm going to move to set the levy at 19.5. You know, whether or not there's interest in joining that, that's a different question. I appreciate the patience of the council. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussions from other councilmembers? Questions, councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Don, councilmember Peterson talked about a lag in the delinquencies. What is that like? Is there a range, you know, six to 12 months, or three to six months when that payment rolls in? What's the trend in the lag of delinquencies?
Mayor, councilmember Taylor, if I understand your question correctly, we've seen that really vary throughout the years. So, for example, during the recession, when there were a lot of foreclosures going on, those foreclosures weren't happening very quickly, and oftentimes, those homes just sat vacant, and nobody was paying those property taxes for that period of time because the banks weren't acting on those foreclosures. So when we see that huge influx of those types of activities, generally, we also see a bit of a longer lag than we would in other cases. But for the most part, when you look at a typical cycle, usually, yes, within the next year or so, we're going to see those collections reestablished once that property is sold.
So I guess I was fishing, Mayor, if I may, I guess I was fishing for a number, three to six months, six to 12 months. And then in those worst-case scenarios, don't people start buying these? I mean, they go to the market, and so people start paying some of these delinquencies. So.
And that's correct. And that's what I was speaking of. When they start buying these, when the properties become delinquent, once they actually go into foreclosure, or short sale, or other types of forms where they are buying them off of the market. But I don't know, councilmember Taylor, that I could really put a number to that as to the number of months. But I would say that, yes, we do typically, over a period of time, recoup those costs.
Thank you. To councilmember Peterson, as you started off with a helpful comment about the policy, and some of these comments you also brought up on Tuesday, which I think have a lot of validity, but this basically is saying this is a policy decision. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, Mayor, but we're kind of indirectly making one by using fund balance at all. And so I'm just suggesting there's another fund balance amount we could use, I think is still responsible. It would actually lower the tax rate. The total levy would stay the same, the rate would go down. And I looked ahead to the future. I really can't foresee a way, unless there's new debt, and that's going to be a totally different issue, that the taxpayers are going to approve on their, and that's going to be their decision. Without new debt, I just don't see how we wouldn't make it through all of our obligations that we currently have. That's what I'm saying, Mayor. And so I think there's a responsible approach that doesn't include a tax increase in any measure.
And I don't want to give an impression that I wouldn't consider this, and there's a term sometimes we use of vetting, just to have some more input as to what the consequences could be, and have various people had a chance to look at it. So maybe I'll ask Don this question. Have you had a chance to look at this, analyze it? Do you have any comments for us?
Mayor, thank you. We did go, this is information that councilmember Peterson had received from the budget office related to the delinquency rates in any given year. We- We, I can validate the data free if you like, in terms of drawing conclusions. I believe that this is a policy decision for the council. I do think that the council will want to consider all aspects of that, including potential future bond sales, should the council want to move forward with any additional capital projects.
Other comments from the council? Councilmember Cook, and then Councilmember Daniels?
Just some thoughts. In our plan that we're moving for this coming fiscal year, I always talk about us making small changes in the direction of the ocean liner. And I know we've made, we'll call the small changes. And sometimes, when the small changes happen, we need to stay on course to see what the consequences of that is. So I know that for this coming fiscal year, we've made those small changes. And I'm not open to making any changes, you know, as we go into the next fiscal year. But I do have a question to mark, because I remember when I first came on council, some of these bonds that we're talking about, I remember you sharing with me, and maybe you can enlighten the council. If we had to do it all over again, we would probably do it differently, as it relates to how we're paying them off and so forth. And I'm just wondering, if we get new debt and new bonds, I think we're going to go down that other plan. I can't remember how you described it to me, but I think I were thinking about the bonds related to the fire stations of the past that we're still paying. But if we would have done them differently, we may not even have this type of discussion, I think. But as we move forward, I think the best business practice of moving forward with new bonds, I think, I'm just trying to balance the kind of the two types of ways of making those payments. I don't know if you can share some of those thoughts, because I know that was years ago when you and I had those discussions.
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, let me try. There's a lot of different things at play, and I think part of the previous conversations you and I had were about all of the indebtedness of the town. It wasn't just the general obligation side, which is the focus of this particular item tonight. One of the things we have to be cognizant of, and in the past, we've tried to pick some anchors for the, you know, it's either the tax rate, or the levy, or the payments. We've tried to keep that relatively constant. Some of the state law changes, and actually, there's also another change that we have the proposition on the AV limitations, which we also have to kind of see how that works through the system. I believe, Don, we're only in the first year of that new assessment process, so...
Correct. And the impact of that was, rather than seeing an increase of up to 24%, as we actually saw in terms of real property valuations, we saw actually an increase of 0.87%, so less than 1%.
So to answer your question, one of the things that we're trying to do is, we're trying to get our hands around all of the different things that are changing. And Don is absolutely correct. It is a policy decision of how you want to approach the fund balance in this case. Councilmember Daniels is absolutely correct. You can't modify it. So whatever you start to use it for, it's truly like a one-time use. If you want to use it to buy down the rate, you can use it to buy down the rate, and that's totally appropriate. One of the things that we're trying to balance is, how do we issue new debt with these current constraints? And we do it economically, that we're not pushing principal out in the future and incurring more costs. And those are probably some of the conversations you and I've had in the past. But this floating, this floating tax rate is, we're trying to figure out how we do this and still make sure the taxpayers are, have a consistent and something that they can follow, and it doesn't, it doesn't jump all over the place. I don't know if I really answered your question directly, but there's a lot of different things at play at this. And Councilmember Peterson is absolutely correct. You can use as much of that fund balance as you want, but I go back to what Councilmember Daniels said, whatever you use it for, you don't necessarily get to use it for again in the future. So we just have to be very careful on how we do that.
And I appreciate you saying that, because to me, again, when I go back to that analogy of that ocean liner, when we do make a small course change, because there's a lot of dynamics, a lot of different forces and factors as relates to our business. You know, the thing for me is, I don't want to hurt our business. So we make these little changes, and we stay the course. And I think as we go through some of the other agenda items later on tonight, we're going to make a couple more changes. But again, it doesn't hurt the business. It does provide benefit to the residents and taxpayers. So I'm good for where we're at. I love the discussion, because I know Councilmember Peterson is always trying to push, which I appreciate, because it's always good to try to, you know, to push a little harder as much as possible to, you know, get down to the real bottom line that we need to run the business. But sometimes, I think I take little, small steps toward that.
Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. What I have heard is that perhaps delinquency rate should be included as part of our policy, and that we should examine that rate as we look at that policy. And obviously, I'm fine with that. But we can make a very well-articulated argument about why we would want to keep this rate at $1.15 and no more. In 2000 to 2001, our secondary property tax rate in the town of Gilbert was $1.25. From 2001 to 2002, it went down to $1.20. And from 2002 until fiscal year 2014, our rate was $1.15 and had not changed. When new state law came on board, we were able to, because of the way our debt is structured, lower our tax rate that we were charging to every resident in Gilbert to $1.6. And now, with our current conditions, and with the way our debt is structured, we would be asking our residents, if we were asking them to pay the full amount, to jump from $1.6 to $1.24. To me, if we have an ability to keep this at a level rate, a rate that our residents would expect, it's been that way for 13 years, $1.15 is a very reasonable rate, and something that I think everyone could swallow, if you will. I do want to verify data, only because I have a little bit different numbers when it comes to the total obligation, different from what Councilmember Peterson handed out. And so I'm not, until I have, you know, verification of that data, I had that from 2016 to 2017, our total obligation would be 22.8 million, and you have it for this coming fiscal year. So I'm not comfortable with those numbers yet until we validate. I feel like we can make a really responsible argument for $1.15, and the fact that our staff has vetted those numbers in comparison to our fund balance gives me great comfort that until at least we have a policy in place, we're still on very safe ground when it comes to this. I went through state statute, I went through the model city tech. I've been through quite a few documents since Tuesday, since this question arose. And I found lots of places where if you overcollect, then you can use those monies for the following year. But there was nothing in those statutes that I found that said if you undercollect, how you cover, and what the state would require from us in order to cover that, I do think our rating agencies would take issue with that if we undercollected. And of course, we're very proud of our AAA in Gilbert, and we have that for a reason, because we do everything in our power to make really responsible financial decisions. So for the long-term health of Gilbert, I really don't want to mess with this. For the short, I can see that there might be some short-term game for the taxpayer, but I think in the long run, I don't think that this type of move would accomplish what we would want it to accomplish, which is making sure that everything in this, in what we do is very predictable for our residents. So sorry, that was long-winded, but I've studied quite a bit since Tuesday.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I'll just share with you my thoughts on this, and maybe a suggestion or some feedback from council as a go-forward plan. So what resonates with me with Councilmember Peterson's is that when there's a responsible way to do this and a reasonable plan, which I think he's put out, we should do it. And because that, I don't disagree with some of the comments regarding uncertainty, but the question is, is do we bias towards our taxpayers in the uncertainty, or the ambiguity, or, you know, the town treasury? And I'm always going to bias towards benefiting our citizens. Until we come up with a policy, and that's why I think it's important to have a policy sooner than later, and setting all of this based on no policy is not good performance, I don't think. So I'm good to bring a policy discussion June 25th. I'm willing to do the homework to make sure that that's done. But, you know, whatever, wherever we go on that one. So I guess if there's a responsible way to do it, and I think there is one in front of us, to bias towards the taxpayers, and I don't, and I'm not totally following Councilmember Cook in that that's going to hurt, you know, businesses. I mean, when has a business ever been hurt by lowering their taxes? So I, and maybe I misunderstood the comments there, but right in front of us is a recommendation to raise the rate and the total levy. So let's bias towards the taxpayers on this. And maybe as an option, and Mike, this is where maybe you can give us some feedback. It sounds like we have two options here in front of us. Is it possible on the 25th to have an option A and an option B, or one and two, as ordinances? And then we can have some extra time to go through that? And then what we're looking to do is adopt one or the other?
Mayor, Councilman Taylor, you can, we can always adopt a lower rate. We just can't adopt a higher one. And legally, option one and option two could be done on the 25th. Whether that's, you know, staff can accomplish that, or that can be fully vetted is not a legal...
We would publish the higher levy, and then if you decided to levy an amount lower than that, you would have that flexibility on the date.
But we could publish the details of an option two, and then give staff the chance to put some additional thinking and comments and thoughts in the packet to address some of the important concerns that have been raised here tonight, is what I'm thinking in terms of option two as well.
Mike, I would defer to you, but I don't know about publishing two different options. I think that may be confusing. I'd defer to you.
Mayor, Councilman Taylor, I'm not familiar enough with the statutory requirements for this process to know if options could be presented in the way you've described.
Okay. Well, thank you for the feedback. Mayor, that was just a thought in terms of, you know, if we have two things on, maybe we can move forward with those, give staff some additional time to provide some input on that, so...
And to the council, in just a moment, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Taylor just brought up having the policy information ready for June 25th, and I know 10, 15 minutes ago, we were really talking about having that August, September timeframe. So as one of the council members will be making a motion, if you could be clear on the timing of that, that will be helpful. So I will ask, is someone ready to make a motion?
Mayor, I just want to make one comment. When I refer to the business, it wasn't our businesses that we have in our town. It was our corporation, our business that I talked about. That's what the reference was. Trust me, I'm all about lowering taxes.
Well, I appreciate it.
You know what? And we are, as we go to the other agenda, we'll talk about that. But again, it's our business, the business that we're managing. I don't want it to impact and hurt our business. So that's the reason why I talk about the little changes that we make, because we are a billion-dollar corporation, basically. That's my reference.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson?
This'll be my last comment. I just wanted to say, when it comes to the fund balance issue, staff has not provided a rational basis why using 1.6 of it is safe, but 3.3 of it is not. The closest thing to a rational basis for using fund balance is the spreadsheet I provided tonight. And I just want to point out really, really quickly, there's no delinquency included in the levy. Legally, we could. I'm not even including any delinquency, padding, contingency at all in my calculation. Secondly, I'm betting, I'm planning that the delinquency will actually be at 4% for every single year. That's another thing that's probably way too conservative. Finally, I'm also treating the delinquency as if it's a permanent loss and never recovered. So there's so many ways that this is overconservative, and there's still a fund balance at the end. I mean, I just, rationally, this is the closest thing I can see to why it's safe to use what I'm suggesting. Until staff can provide something else, I'm sorry, I'm going to trust numbers more than I trust that something, I mean, it was a 1.15 rate, and I appreciate that. And I understand there's a rational basis to go back to that historical rate. But the resulting fund balance that's used, that's not really dealt with. And so that's all, and I'll, that's all I was going to say. I'm all stop, stop talking, although I might make a second, or an amendment to a motion.
Don, another question. The AAA was referenced a few minutes ago. And one of the things I learned when they came is that, and this may be to Councilmember Cook's comment, changes, we have to be careful.
They should be strategic, Mayor, yes.
Would this be a change that could cause Moody's to be a little uncomfortable with this, without having us having a chance to explain why we did it?
Mayor, I would advise certainly that any changes that you make to any kind of structure whatsoever need to be very clearly done strategically and intentionally, and consistent with the council's policies and stated values.
Mayor, I just want to make a comment to that. I appreciate your line of thinking here. I know that some of the changes in the next agenda item, there was a discussion about something like that, even though my discussion was minor, this would be more significant. So you bring up a great point.
So 42 will not cause concern to Moody's. This one could. Okay.
And I'm sorry. I may be able to provide a bit of clarification as well, and I appreciate Councilmember Peterson's comments on that. When we looked at the delinquency rate last year, obviously, that was new legislation, and so we consulted with Wise Council to figure out the best way of approaching that. When we looked last year and we spoke with council, we talked about the, because of our debt service, that went down and then back up again. If we were to look at that 1.05, or that 5% delinquency rate, it would bring us down to that 106.59. It would actually bring us back up, if you recall, to over $1.30 this coming year. So what you see before you is an acknowledgement of, let's not, is a recommendation from staff to not charge that delinquency rate, and really accept that risk, knowing that that delinquent, if that delinquent property is, then we would have to pay that amount out of fund balance as well. So by lowering that, removing the delinquency rate, that took it from that between $1.30 and $1.31 down to the $1.24. The recommendation you see before you to bring it down to $1.15 utilizes further fund balance, as you know. To Councilmember Peterson's point, you know, we look at what's a reasonable amount of fund balance to have in place, and that's something we're looking to counsel for some direction on, and some additional conversation as well. One thing, I think it was Councilmember Cook and some of our, and some of our conversations, was recalling how council was able, through actions in prior bond sales, to look at either competitive sales or negotiated sales, depending on what was going to bring the best possible benefit to the citizens and businesses here in the town of Gilbert. And we've saved millions of dollars by getting those lower interest rates. Well, with some of our negotiated sales, where we were able to really get lower interest rates by basically structuring the debt in the way that was going to benefit the town and the banks that were buying those bonds at the same time, we were able to get those lower interest rates. And what that did, that meant that when they needed the cash flow, we would have, we would have higher debt service payments those years. And in the years that they didn't need that cash flow, we would have the lower ones. Well, with the new legislation, that makes that much more difficult to manage, and to manage a consistent rate. So what staff's recommendation is to council is to review that, determine a level that you have comfort in, that know, to know that in issuing any additional debt, or even refinancing any of our existing debt, that you have the flexibility to sell the bonds at the lowest possible rate, and be able to weather those peaks and valleys, rather than having to accept a higher rate, just so you can have a level debt service payment.
Vice Mayor Ray, I heard that you were ready to make a motion.
I am, Mayor. Knowing that this item number 40 is the maximum levy, I move that we approve item 40.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor, it may just be for fun exercise, but I'll move to amend the motion to replace the suggested levy amount with 19.5 million.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion second. And so let's vote first on...
Amendment.
The amendment. Okay. Okay. That does not pass. And so we return to the original...
That's correct.
...motion, and we'll clear it and ask you now to vote on the original motion. That's... That's approved with a five to vote. Thank you. Agenda item 36 will be our last public hearing item before we get to the budget, and we'll have a quick recess after 36. So I open Agenda item 36, and Councilmember Taylor, you wish to make a comment on that?
Mayor, I do. Thank you. Let me get to my notes here real quick. 36, right?
36.
Yeah. Mayor, I'm happy to move this here if there's not further comment, but just want to, again, appreciate the great work that our volunteers do. And with some of the modifications to, specifically to the Human Relations Commission, which I'm a liaison to, just getting some feedback and talking with them, the only thing that they asked in making these changes is that a council get a copy of a document from 2012 that stated some objectives and thoughts that they had for the commission, and then for council to consider that as we go into retreat and possibly provide further guidance to the HRC. And so earlier today, Mayor, I took a copy of the face sheet of that document and sent it over to our TAM manager to possibly dig up an archive and email that out. So just with that comment, I'm happy to move to approve 36.
Let me close the public hearing on 36, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve item 36, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, with that motion second, please vote. Thank you. We will have a five-minute recess, and then when we come back, we will move to Agenda item 41.
This is my... This is the first down.
And speaking of stretch, and this final stretch for the meeting, in order to have a discussion that would allow us to adopt a final budget for next fiscal year, is there a motion to recess our regular meeting and convene in special meeting?
Aye.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Why don't we just, for purposes right now, all in favor, say aye? Aye? Okay, we're in now the special meeting, and we go to Agenda item 41. We do have one request from a citizen to speak, and let me just, Don, were there any items you needed to bring up? Or did we cover it in the study session or in other conversations? Or anything you needed to give us as far as an overview of Agenda item 41?
Mayor, we have as much or as little information as the mayor and council would care to see tonight.
Okay. Let me go then to Vice Mayor Ray, and let's have our request to speak at this time.
Mayor, I invite Joe Guusik to come forward. And Joe, as you've done in the past, if you state whether you're a Gilbert resident, and we'll give you three minutes.
Excellent. My name is Joe Guusik, and I am a Gilbert resident. Mayor Lewis, fellow town council members, all town of Gilbert staff, citizens, and guests. I want to share something with you guys. I know a few months ago, Nerd Wallet kind of put out a thing saying that we pay high taxes. It's funny how numbers can be misrepresented. There's a group out there, and I appreciate when groups do scorecards and stuff like that, a group called American for Prosperity. Several of you were labeled as heroes for big government. I'm not going to stand here and accept that. I appreciate the individuals' input, thoughts, and ideas, but for the several of you that were labeled that, that is completely false. Every single one of you is a hero of every citizen in this town. And I just simply, I've got to stand up, you know? When a business grows and they expand their budget, they're applauded. They're heroes. When a town is growing and they expand their budget, somehow, it gets demonized. I could easily save $300,000 tonight, and I could basically say, all of you go home. I'll buy you a computer, we'll come up with a factor number, and let the thing calculate it. But that's not what makes this town great. It's having seven great individuals like yourself and Councilmember Cooper last year. We need the human factor. We need to have discussion, dialogue, and debate. The scenario that I want to share with you is, when the economy is good, I do want you to be as efficient, lean, and mean as you can be. And it's proven time and time, over and over again, throughout the numbers, that throughout this state and throughout this, that we run our business lean and mean. The purpose of this institution is when good times are good, collect the revenues that you need. Because the best time for you to make an investment back in the community is when things are tough. And I want to share with you, when you do have those dollars, and believe me, if people are going to tell me that this is, that individuals on this board are heroes of big government, then why aren't all these chairs fixed? We have needs, and I just want to point that out. Councilman Cook brought up a, about a year ago, or a year and a half ago, brought out a chair from a tractor, and it was broken. That's not how we do things. I won't accept it from our school districts, I won't accept it from our town. I want us to be, I want us not, when we have these kind of labels, and I'm sorry I'm going over, but I have to, we got to make sure that we are Team Gilbert. We're here to represent every citizen. And you guys wear many different hats. I will say, if you had seven of me on this board, it'd be run like UPS, but I don't want it that way. You'd have, everything would be brown, for crying out loud. So I just want the people to know that when, if they get their hands on this report, that is out of context, and in my opinion, completely not representative of the seven of you. Thank you.
You did that whole thing without saying education first once?
Now you've done it.
Oops.
I am more than happy to always say to you, when you put education first, you put your economy first, you put public safety first, you put many things first.
Thank you.
Truly what we need to do.
That's the escalation point. Thanks. To the council, and I think I'm, because Councilmember Peterson, I kind of started there for four, let's go down here to Councilmember Peterson with an O. And related to 41, we had, we've had several discussions over the last nine months, and then study session. So do you have any items that you wish to discuss tonight related to the budget?
Mayor, I've done a lot of question-asking to the staff and trying to learn what I'm supposed to be looking at with the budget. I'd like to hear what the other council members have to bring up, so that I can maybe follow up with my questions to those items.
Okay, thank you.
I've heard some things Tuesday night, so I'd like to see where that goes.
Councilmember Daniels, any comments at this point?
Yes, thanks, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity. And I know that it's late, and we've been in many meetings in this room where the AC kicks off at 10:00. I always know the clock by the air conditioning, so. I've thought a lot this week and in previous weeks about why we do what we do. Why do we sit up here and hash out in animated dialogue our budget and our levy and have those types of conversations? Why do we pay people taxpayer dollars in order to provide services to our residents? And as I've thought about that, I've thought, it's because we really want to be the best-run municipality in this country. And there's an effort, a desire, a work ethic, there is a tremendous amount of talent, education, energy that goes into putting ourselves and our community first. And as policymakers, we take this responsibility of being the fiduciary agents of the community really seriously, and as much as it's a privilege, we know that it's a huge responsibility as well. So when we have that kind of dialogue, I think it's actually to the betterment of the community at the end of the day, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. As we, as policymakers, we want to look not just at the challenges that we have today, but the challenges we're going to have in this community in the years to come. And that, I think, weighs heavily on all of our minds as we make these types of big decisions. How are we going to be the best municipality in the country? How are we going to be the most fiscally responsible? We're going to enact and adopt sound policies, and then empower the people who work on behalf of the citizens to operate within that framework and to produce services, and in this case, a budget that reflects the values of the community. And through strategic plans and other efforts, I think that we've accomplished the how of that. And finally, so what do we have to promote today? We've had multiple conversations, Don, I've talked to Mary and others in the Budget Office. Patrick has to hear from me on a fairly regular basis. I drill Mark about spreadsheets and budgets and pie charts and things like that as well. Lots, this is an 11-and-a-half-month process that will start again probably the second week of July in order to prepare for next year. This is an exhaustive effort, and there's so much that goes into it. So at the end of the day, when this budget comes before us as a council, this isn't a whim, this isn't a, this isn't just sort of numbers thrown on the screen. This represents both the values of our community and the effort and talent, and again, education of our town employees. So we're going to do better every year, year over year. That's what we require of our employees, that's what we require of ourselves. You have just heard that we've admitted to the fact that we don't have a policy to guide a really important part of our financials, and that's not okay, and I think we recognize that, and we want to make that right. Our budget reflects the effort that's been made over the last 11-and-a-half months, and I'm really proud of this document. I've been here when it wasn't quite as a collaborative process, and this is by far the best budget that we've had in the town. And we will continue to do better and to look for efficiencies, so that next year, again, we can be really the best municipality in the state and in the country. So, sorry, that was like, really passionate, but this has become, it's really kind of weighed on me in the last few weeks, so there you have it.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. You know, budget's always very important, one of our number-one jobs, and I want to thank Patrick and your team for, you know, Don, especially, you know, today being your last day, for the hard work that's been done. We know you're listening to all of us, and we all have lots of different opinions, we all have a lot more in common than we have differences. I'm convinced of that, even though we show a lot of our differences up here on various issues. And as I mentioned to Don earlier today, while I think this budget reflects what the majority of this council believe, and I commend you for doing that, because I think that your job is to find out what most of us believe, there's still some things I have exceptions to. So as I go through those, I just want to make sure the backdrop is a positive backdrop and a compliment. and a complimentary one for the hard work because this does, as Councilmember Daniels just said, reflect a lot of priorities. And there are a lot of good things in here that are consistently recognized internally and outside of Gilbert as well. But Mayor, again, the exceptions that I have at this time, you know, have to do with some of the headcount. I think we're taking on a little bit more administrative cost that we need to, and we've been promised in some prior things, I'm not going to repeat that, we've already had that You know, the one that we've talked about, just to give a case study, you know, is the fire inspector. And, you know, while we have great fire inspectors and we have good processes there, Dan Dubois is excellent in his class, there's still some ways to improve. And there's still some specific things that, you know, I'm looking forward to sharing, you know, with Patrick and his team to improve that. And, you know, when I ran mayor, I promised the voters that I'd do everything that I possibly can to be more efficient and bring some best-in-class things. And my background says, don't, you know, improve things and continue to fund things that aren't optimal. And there's a couple areas here that we can add some efficiencies to. Efficiency to me is where you're getting more for less. And that doesn't necessarily mean, you know, the person that's doing that is having to work harder. It's really about working smarter, more efficiently. This budget is costing the taxpayers for the same level of service more. And so, again, Mayor, I do want to compliment the team. There's some great progress that I've seen between our last meeting and this. It just hasn't gone far enough, so still open to learning and hearing other thoughts. But right now, I'd still like to see it go a little bit further before I could support it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray?
So this week, I've had the, I guess opportunity is the right word, to be at Boy Scout Camp with lots of Boy Scouts and doing different mayor badges and things, and one of which was citizenship in the community. And when they found out that there was an elected official at Camp Geronimo, they wanted me to speak to a lot of the boys so they could pass one of the requirements. And it's not because of my ability to speak, but it's simply because they needed elected officials to pass that requirement up. And so it was great to be able to talk about all these wonderful things that Gilbert does. And there's kids from all over the state there, some from Gilbert, Phoenix, Tucson, and all other municipalities. And it was a lot of fun to talk about Gilbert, there were so many great things. And even the leaders would start asking questions like, "Wait, you have the lowest cost per resident, you have the lowest full-time employee per resident, you are the second safest city in America, you've paid off this many of your bonds, you had 12 credit or bond rating increases in the last four years, you're now AAA." The only one in America that I know of, AAA community, that does not have a primary property tax. Lots of great things to talk about. And so as I was driving home tonight, thinking about this on the way to the meeting, I say thank you to staff and to all those who make that possible. This budget has come a long ways. I do take exception when comments are made that we're paying more for the same level of service. I think that's incorrect. We, as a council, have continued to add additional things for staff to do. We've added additional best-in-class, we have added additional policies that take up additional time and resources, whether it's parks and rec plans, whether it's transportation master plans, whether it's the infrastructure. All of that was not done two or three years ago. And so, in my opinion, we have gotten additional levels of service, not just we as a council, but we as approximately 240,000 residents have gotten additional service. And have we paid more over the last couple of years? We have. The budget has gone up a little bit each year, and part of that is, in my opinion, because we have additional services that we offer, and it also is because we have additional residents. And the other thing that I would suggest to council, Councilmember Daniels said in July we'll start this again, for council members who want to offer suggestions, let's start in July. It's a little concerning to me when we offer the night that we're going to improve this, some ideas that we may have. Let's do that in July so that they can be implemented by the end of the year rather than at the last minute. And I appreciate all of council's efforts. Each one of us do have the end goal of making Gilbert the best place possible for the lowest amount of money. And I appreciate the effort of council and of staff and of the great residents. I think between the three of them, I think council probably plays the lowest role, but between staff and the great residents we have, we do have a tremendous community that we should be proud of. This budget, I appreciate the effort. Don and others have spent countless hours with me and each one of us and have offered countless more hours to spend with us if we would give them the time to talk more about it. And so, thank you to each of the staff members, thank you to the council members who made this possible, and to the residents who make this community so great.
Councilmember Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Don, you know, these wonderful slides you have, as you know the history, and I see Mary there because I remember us in those meetings, coming up with the story. The story of where we began four years ago to the story that we're at today. The transformation of local government in a town in Gilbert is unbelievable. And as a businessperson, from where we started four years ago to where we're at, is a textbook story and how you transform a government from where it was to a more efficient, well-run, lean operation. And by the way, we came up with a great strategy, in my personal view, and I know the majority of the council, as relates to the investment that we put back into our employees by fixing the comp and study process. And that, to me, because we are a service organization, is not providing a service, but to me, we're all serving. And I think it's a little bit different when we, from our position of serving our community and the results that we've been doing is just unbelievable financially. So again, I appreciate that you continue to update these slides because these slides I use quite a bit. It shows the story of how well we're doing. And I, you know, as I share them with our other neighbors, they're a little jealous of these slides because it shows the wonderful impact that we have in our community. And I believe that as we set the standard of how well we're running, it's all because of the wonderful employees that we have, their commitment to serve, not to provide a service, but to serve our community is recognized. So, Mayor, I am thrilled that for all the four years of going through this, again, we do a really good job of providing the level of cost to run our business that it's healthy and that we also have, you know, enough for the future as relates to the things that we put together for strategic planning for providing, you know, our future infrastructures that we need. So again, thank you to your staff. Patrick, stop yawning over there, I know I'm boring. I'm going to write that down in your performance review here. But again, it's been wonderful, it's been a great, great time this year.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just want to thank this council, the whole council, for the kind of dialogue we have. I had to smile at Councilmember Daniels' comment about the animated discussion. I don't know what you're talking about, I'm never animated. I'm kidding, obviously. Sometimes I'm more animated than I like to be. That's because I'm passionate about what we're doing here. And I'm passionate about our taxpayers, and I'm passionate about being the best we can be. And I know there's a lot of passion for that in this room. And so I just want to commend everyone for their efforts, first of all. We do have a lot to be proud of, we have a lot to be proud of. I think we've taken a lot of important steps in the right direction. So, back to my concerns, there's some ongoing costs versus ongoing revenues. Those trends, and again, we need more information, but based on the little that I have, I have some concerns with that. And we don't need to go through all the slides, I'm not going to do that tonight because you've seen them. I'm sure everyone's tired of my, my slides never look as good as hers, that's all I'm saying. So I just, anyway, I need to get some training from staff on that, but, so I won't go through that. But I will make one modest proposal, I'm going to make my most modest budget proposal ever. I'm going to try and remove one FTE from the budget. I don't know, we'll see. It won't be Patrick. You know?
Has the town attorney now dogs?
If it was Patrick, I would want to explain why, and that could be legal trouble, I just, I don't want to do that. We want to do that without cause, we'll do that some other time, you'll never know. But anyway, no. But in all seriousness, this isn't to remove an existing FTE, it's one that we would be adding, so no one's going to lose their job tonight. But maybe later. No, not really. Okay, why is everyone laughing so much? All right, here's the deal. I studied the correlation between, this is really actually cool, I'm happy to explain this. If you recall my previous chart, correlating the number of inspections with the number of fires, you'll remember it was pretty blobular, that's not a real term, but there was really no recognizable correlation. It was really cool because Chief Joe Bush sent me a chart, or a table, that actually broke out the high hazard inspection versus the low hazard inspection numbers. Totally different story came out. When I correlated the high hazard inspections to the numbers of fires, I'm convinced there is a significant correlation that as we do more of those inspections, fires reduce. Ah, can't believe I'm saying that, but that's what the data shows. The low hazard inspection still shows zero, obviously, that's what's not showing a correlation. When you remove that, the high hazards inspections do reveal one. So, my opinion is still that all the resources we're using towards the low hazards inspections ought to be redirected to the high hazard ones. I don't think we'd have to add any new FTE. Admittedly, there's some vetting of that that some people might want, but I believe that's true based on the homework I've done. So, tonight, that's what I'm going to move to do, and if others are interested, that's great, but that's my most modest budget change ever. See what happens.
Okay, let's call on the mayor. How does the mayor feel about this? So, the adopt verbiage on this is the cap. We have done very well to make sure we have never, as long as I can recall, and I think we can't do this from a state statute, but legally we can do, but at the same time, we've come up with being very, we've been, from a budget to actual, we've always done well. And so I anticipate that again, and some of the comments that have been made, and I appreciate even Tuesday, some of the, I don't know if it was concerns, but just questions and things to investigate, and even with the one FTE, we can continue to do that, and we do have a culture of efficiency and questioning, and so I think to town staff, those comments can be looked at, and we'll continue to look at them throughout the year. This just puts a cap at where we can spend, and so I'm ready to move forward. I do have to add that the excitement of Moody's this past year, and that was a team effort, but it, we did not get there until they came and said our financials were excellent at a three-star rating, excellence. And Don, you realize, we both realize, that it involved everyone. In fact, the second thing they said, they extended not only to town staff, Team Gilbert here, but they were talking about our education community, our business community, all the citizens and the parks and how everyone comes in together and to be the second safest city it was, citizens and neighborhoods. And so, it's a team result, but at the same time, there was a leader, and it was Don. And so, thank you. And sometimes I abbreviate those simple two words of lead on, and that's what you'll do. And the legacy that you've left has provided a culture of efficiency, service organization, zero-budget processes, and questioning, and Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Peterson, this Don is a scary person. There are Team Gilbert team members that had to justify through her, and they took off some of the same principles that you do so well with. So, Don, carry on, lead on, and I'm going to leave it at that, and I will entertain a motion right now.
Mayor?
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you.
Oh, did I forget to let you have the last word? Please.
Sorry, I tried to get your attention, but you jumped right in. So, in my last four and a half months that I've been here, I guess it is now, I've been able to work very closely with staff. And all of the accolades that this town receives is because of what they do. I completely disagree that we haven't seen a different level of service in the past several years. You still somehow maintain that lean machine that this community has come to be known as, and you do it on a daily basis, and you work very hard to make sure that we receive those accolades, and you celebrate those accolades with us, which I appreciate so very much. I'm very sad to see Don go, I'm sitting here looking at your face. And I want to trust the process that this staff goes through. The first list of FTEs that I saw was much higher, much more extensive, and you have managed, working under the extreme situations and conditions that you do, to still bring that list down to 26 FTEs to us as a council and to present to us with this budget. And I appreciate that, and I want you to know that I appreciate that. And if you were able to work down to those numbers in the process that you use, then that's what I'm comfortable being presented with. I think that because of the process that you use, that's where we should look at from a council standpoint. I can't say that I work in your offices every day with the fire department, doing inspections in the police department, and know exactly what each group needs in order to move this community forward. Councilmember Daniels presented numbers Tuesday night, that the population has increased 14% and our staff's increased one. That's amazing, and you all deserve a big round for that because it's all because of you. Every accolade that we receive is all because of you, not because of the seven of us, not because of anybody that sat here before, it's all because of what you do on a daily basis. Please know that you are appreciated, and then I feel the level of service has definitely increased in this community as a community member. So, thank you.
I entertain, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, it's a privilege to say, I move that we approve Agenda Item 41.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second.
Mayor, maybe a futile effort, but it is allowed by Roberts rules. I move to amend the budget to remove one fire inspector FTE.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I second that. Can we clear the voting for this next one?
Okay, thank you. With that second on the amendment, please vote on that. Okay, that's not approved, we'll go back to the original motion from Councilmember Cook, and please vote on that. And that's approved. And is there a motion to adjourn the special meeting and reconvene in the regular meeting?
I'm moved.
All in favor, say aye. Okay. Agenda Item 42, any discussion on that item? I know we briefly discussed it in the study session, and Councilmember Peterson, I did note earlier in our meeting, start of the meeting in fact, that you wanted to speak on this, is that correct?
Mayor, I'll keep it as short as I can. Bottom line here is, the proposed carve-outs as a way of cutting this tax, it's not my favorite approach. If I had my favorite idea, it would be cut the rental tax. There's a number of reasons, I won't bore you with the details, but it would benefit low-income families the most, and furthermore, if I had some time to explain it, I think I could reasonably explain that it's double taxation. But our state law doesn't currently allow us to lower the rate on just that category. We'd have to cut the whole thing, and that would be like $3.5 to $4 million ongoing. I doubt I'm going to get support for that. My favorite idea, my second favorite idea would be to just drop our overall TPT rate from 1.5 to 1.49, I know, but still. That would reduce our annual revenues about $485,000 a year. That may be high for what everyone has a taste for as well, but I would argue that it would actually end up a lesser deduction than that because of, all things being made equal, there's some economic principles that would probably raise the gross activity in the economy. Anyway, anyway, that all having been said, unless there's others interested in either of those favorite options... of those favorite options, I'm just grateful there's any tax cut on the table. I think that's awesome, and just thought I'd share a few comments on that.
Thank you, and good ideas to continue to think about. For this particular one, it sounds like you're in favor.
I'll take any tax cut I can get, Mayor.
Would you like to be the one that makes the motion?
Sure.
Mayor, real quick, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Cook for his efforts and time spent to see this all the way through, so.
I second that. I second that. Thank you, Jen.
Okay. All right. Well, let's finish 42. So, we have a motion... Well, was the second to thank Councilmember Cook, or was that a... Let's stick with 42. There was... Who made the motion?
No one did.
Okay. But you made a motion.
No, he hasn't made it.
You made a motion. Who made a second on that?
He didn't make it. There was no motion.
Would you... Okay, let's finish this off. Motion, please.
I move to approve Item 40.
Is there a second?
Sorry, 42. That was the wrong number.
There's a motion, and second with Councilmember Taylor. Please vote.
Can you, like, push my button there?
No, that's actually...
You actually need to vote by acclamation. That's actually not allowed. We can't push this button.
All right.
You have my permission to push my button. I vote yes. I vote yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you. Now, was there... Councilmember Cook, you're at the microphone, please.
Well, I wasn't sure if we had any more presentation to do, but thank you for voting yes on this agenda item. It has been a lot, a lot of months that I have worked with Dawn and her team discussing this particular topic, and as I shared before, the idea of making a little tweak to a dial or a little adjustment to the lever to the, you know, the massive, complex tax codes that we have. And in fact, I even went down the road of eliminating food tax or getting it down 10%. And we do have some challenges in that area because I literally fought a lot for that in trying to get the data. And when I looked at our neighbors that have implemented something like that, they didn't do it based upon data. They did it based upon, I think, politics. So, I think we have opportunities to discuss that more when we have the ability to extract that data even better. But again, those were always on the table as we discussed this. But most importantly, what I wanted to do on behalf of the council, I did something for all of us here. I have dearly come to appreciate Dawn, as all of you have, and it's been... I know you used to beat up Mark quite a bit in the early days, and he somehow hired Dawn and switched teams here or whatever. Maybe I can't hit a girl instead of a guy, but anyways, Dawn has been just a tremendous team member that I can't even explain the value that she has brought to our community, to the leadership and management team here in the town of Gilbert. The things that we have moved forward with, Dawn has been extremely instrumental, and we can all name all of those. And it has been with great joy to be able to be associated and have that relationship with her as a council member and working through a lot, a lot of numbers and data and budgets. But anyways, Dawn, this is just a tiny appreciation on behalf of this team, because we are one team. We're going to miss you, but we know we will wish you well. And again, thank you for all you've done. You have created literally a legacy for us to move forward. You set the new standard in how local government is run. So, we wish you well in your endeavors, and you're always welcome to come back. Thank you.
And let's continue on with 43. Do we need a motion on 43? That's to consider the acceptance of the third quarter budget report.
So moved.
Okay. We have so moved, and a second?
Second.
And please vote. It's approved with a seven of a vote. Agenda Item 44, do we have some reports on boards, commissions, and committees? I guess when the air conditioning goes off, we move on. Let's go to future meetings. Anything else? Go right to communications report from town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. If it's acceptable to you and the council, I'd like to turn over a portion of my time to Dawn Buckland.
Please, Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And in the interest of the evening drawing close, I'll try and make this pretty quick, but I wanted to extend my most sincere appreciation to each and every one of you for this amazing opportunity and for being a part of this tremendous team, and to all of you, the staff of the town. When we talk about AAA, it's really quadruple A because we've got our management budget administrator Amber, and our analysts Laura Lorenzen, Mary Vincent, and Chris Parasot. And really, it's that tremendous team that brought us the AAA, as well as Cindy Mathiason, Tanya Wright, and everyone else throughout the organization. So, it really is, Mayor, as you said, a reflection of teamwork throughout the organization, throughout the entire community, and I'm so honored to have been a part of that. I did see an off-duty officer in the audience there, and I was wondering if Commander Buckland could give me a quick hand? Up here.
And that's an order, I think.
Because, Mayor, if I may ask for your indulgence here, I know we normally do some presentations at the beginning of the meeting, but there are a couple more I think that we need to do this evening here. So, the first is the Albert Einstein Award for Mark Skacipic. Mark, thank you so very much.
Is it the facial hair?
Thank you so very much for your tireless dedication to service for Gilbert and for our profession. Your brilliant ability to synthesize incredibly complex situations and meet multiple interests has resulted time and again in Gilbert not only meeting but redefining best-in-class. Thank you.
I'd like my time back now.
I have a lot of awards for Patrick, but in the interest of public here, the Winston Churchill Award. Patrick, thank you for demonstrating tremendous leadership in the face of adversity. Your determination and perseverance to ensure that local government does what is right has been a motivation and inspiration for all. Keep calm and carry on. And this is where I need the help of the off-duty officer here. For Bridget Peterson, the Arianna Huffington Award, also known as the Lavender Ambassador Award. Purple is the color of royalty, and your enthusiasm and heart matches well with it. Thank you for representing Gilbert with such passion and compassion. Arianna Huffington said, "Restore connection is not just for devices, it's for people too. This mentality needs to be introduced as a leadership and performance-enhancing tool." Jen Daniels. This is the Eleanor Roosevelt Award. One's philosophy is not best expressed in words, it is expressed in the choices one makes, and the choices we make are ultimately our responsibility. Thank you for everything that you do to make sure that the choices we make are strategic, intentional, and accomplish our goals. You make Gilbert great. I beat you too, this one. The Powdered Wig Award. He did coin that term. I stole it, I have to admit. Thank you for your adamant commitment and dedication to lean government. Your unwavering belief in process improvement is commendable and generates real results. Government can be efficient, effective, and innovative, and Gilbert is proof of that. Eddie Cook. The One Team Award. You coined the term "one team" for Gilbert, and it is now a way of doing business. Moody's recognized Gilbert's amazing collaboration amongst departments, council, businesses, agencies, and community members. We really are now best-in-class on all lines of service. Victor Peterson. Are you dying to hear what your award is?
I'm a little nervous.
The 5,000-year leap award.
I used to teach classes on it. Isn't that funny?
Strong local self-government is the keystone to preserving human freedom. Your diligent attention and untiring quest for understanding may keep me on my toes, but ensures that we always have the best possible product for our community. Thank you for your commitment to public service. Vice Mayor Jordan Ray. The Soren Kirkegaard Award. Christopher Hitchens said, "The essence of the independent mind lies not in one when thinks, but in how it thinks. Thank you for always engaging in dialogue, asking questions, and always formulating your decision based on multifaceted information and interests. We are always big head... We are always better because you approach with an open mind." And Mayor Lewis. The Abraham Lincoln Award.
Not the San Francisco Giant Award? What? What? Go ahead.
I'm really trying to be nice, but I wanted to make this a winning award.
Okay. Oh.
Patrick told me to say that. Lincoln chose the best people, the most capable people, to surround himself and accomplish what is best for the country. He was inclusive and yet decisive. Thank you for engaging all perspectives to arrive at the best possible outcomes and yet ensuring timely beneficial decisions. Your tremendous leadership is AAA.
We return to Town Manager Baner.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, on behalf of all the staff, and I think I speak for our elected officials as well, Dawn, thank you for all the years of great service for our community, and we have so much to be thankful for from your time spent with us. You do leave a great legacy and a great team of people, and you will be missed, truly. Thank you. Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
Something about the third-best city in the country for jobs. Should we note that in this meeting?
We did receive notice. There was a CNBC article ranking Gilbert as the third-best city in the country for jobs.
Okay. Noted.
Another accolade.
Report from town, from council on current events?
Mayor, I know the hour's late, but I'd like to bring two things up that I attended and just report out to council. Number one, yesterday morning, the City of Mesa had a nice event with their light rail through the downtown. Attended that. Mayor Giles and the council were there, hosted that. They're starting the testing phase of that. August 22 was announced as the date when operationally that light rail will be going, and Mayor Giles noted that Prop 400 funded that rail through to Gilbert Road on Main Street. He was excited that... He specifically said that that could serve residents in the town of Gilbert that had an interest in doing that, and he was looking at the regional impact of that and was excited for that. Anyways, I thought I would share that with you because that was a fun thing to attend for one of our regional partners there. And then earlier today, I was fortunate enough to join the governor when he announced, you know, putting $2.2 billion into public education. And as you know, in Gilbert, that's a big topic of interest, and it has been for a number of years. Specifically, there's some overrides that are coming up, a lot of concern for teacher pay. Anyways, it was great to be there. Mayor Giles was there, other top leaders in the legislature were there, some of my fellow State Board of Education members were there, people there from the Teachers Association and School Board Association, a lot of people there to support that. And anyways, I just bring that up because of the interest in our community. Education is first, and it's nice to see the governor take a substantive step in strengthening. And I'll just leave with you one little story that kind of builds on a recognition Councilmember Daniels had earlier. One of the speakers after the governor was the Teacher of the Year, and she's a fifth-grade teacher at the Dice Art Unified School District. And we happened to be walking out after the press conference back to our cars, and we were talking, and she was asking, "Where do your children go?" I said, "A couple in Gilbert Public Schools and another in a charter." When she heard I was from Gilbert, she just went off and said, "You know, some of the most talented educators in America are in Gilbert, in those districts out there, and not just the most talented teachers." And this is the Teacher of the Year, so she knows what she's talking about. She says, "Not just the teachers, but your education leaders. I mean, some of the thought leaders in education are in your districts and in some of your other public education institutions." We recognize one tonight that has a big impact, you know, at the state level. So anyways, education is first, and it's nice to see more money going to it, but I thought you might be interested in that recognition as, you know, Gilbert is well-known for its positive contribution in many ways, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I know you mentioned it earlier, but I think it's really worth mentioning again that we're having the finale for Feeding Families Monday morning at 7:30 here in the lobby, and the staff has worked so hard on that that I just wanted to say it one more time.
Thank you. Okay. I'll finish at the podium. So, Dawn, this will be symbolic. This takes a lot of practice and wrist action, but this will be closing a chapter, opening a new chapter, but before you do it, let's see if I can bring up one more thing. So, last week, when I was studying the budget, the grandsons were watching me, and they decided to get some input, and feedback is like a gift. So, these are the four Lewis grandsons. We also have a Grandpa Cook, and we'll have future grandparents and grandmas up here. But the feedback, and Dawn, this is for you, they said, "In that budget that you're looking at right now, Grandpa, have you made sure that there are stores that have Legos? And have you made sure that there's going to be a Lego Land in Gilbert?" I'm not sure if the answer is yes, but that's feedback that these four wanted to make sure that you received. The other question that's been asked many Gilbert residents, and so I went ahead and did a random poll, and so I got 100% feedback, and so the answer is by official proclamation, Gilbert's a warrior city. And Dawn, if you can now come and quickly adjourn the meeting.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.